January 26, 2021, Half Moon Bay Planning Commission meeting. I just wanted to let everyone know out there in the public that we are broadcasting this meeting live on Local 27, Channel 27, and Pacific Coast TV's website. If we have any attendees that come in, we do allow public speaking and public comment. So Commissioner or our Chair will allow public comment during this course of the agenda items. If you guys have any other questions in the public, feel free to raise your hand when public comment is available. And I thank you for your patience with the remote meetings. And we'll now hand the meeting over to Chair Benjamin to officially begin our meeting this evening.
Thank you very much, Bridget. Welcome, everyone, to the meeting of January 26 of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. It's our organizational meeting, so it's got to be a framing hammer. And with that, I called meeting to order and invite you to rise with me and join in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. To the republic which stands.
One nation, one nation. Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bridget, could we please roll call of the commissioners?
Yes, Commissioner Gorn.
I'm here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Commissioner Polgar.
Here.
Vice Chair Riddick.
Here.
And Chair Benjamin.
I am here, thank you.
All commissioners are present.
All right, then the first item of business on our agenda tonight is the consideration of the draft minutes of January 12, 2021. Do any, since Commissioner Gordon wasn't present at that meeting, he will be abstaining on this item, I would imagine.
Right.
Do any of my colleagues have any amendments, corrections, additions?
I do not.
I will just point out, the minutes are great. I mentioned an ex parte communication with a fellow named Nick that is accurately reflected in the minutes. I did not recall his last name at the time, but in reading the minutes, I know it was Nick De La Torre. So I asked that the minutes reflect for accuracy that that was the person that I spoke with. With that amendment, I would entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
And the amendment is okay with you, Rick?
Yes, with the amendment mentioned by Chair Benjamin.
And it's okay with you, Vice Chair?
Yes, it's fine, thanks.
Okay. I may need to abstain, I wasn't there for the entire meeting, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Polgar. That's true. So, yeah, how does that work? She was there for part of it. It doesn't seem like we divide the question of minutes. I think abstention is fine, we still have a quorum. All right, could we have a roll call of the three commissioners who are eligible to vote, please?
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick.
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin.
Yes. All right, the next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is the point in our meeting when anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on a subject which is not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. So with that, I would like to open the public comment period and ask Bridget if we have any members of the public who would like to speak during this time.
We have none, Chair Benjamin.
I believe there is one member of staff who would like to use this time to address the commission on an item, but that's, that's fine. We should have let the public go first anyway. So I'm going to personally recognize the City Manager, Bob Nisbet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, really glad to be here today. Felt like a good meeting to attend. New year, new commission, new commissioner, and outgoing commissioner, of course. And Jill made it clear to me that she was going to take some time today to have a mini retreat with you guys and a training. So I thought it was the perfect time to come in and make a few comments and participate, or at least watch some of the training today. So absolutely would like to be the first, I guess, and I'm sure you'll do this later, to recognize and acknowledge Commissioner Brian Holt for his service. I see his name, I don't see his picture, but I assume he's listening. Maybe, there he is. Hey, Brian. So, yeah, I wanted to thank you personally, Brian, for serving for these years. I don't know how many years it is, but it seems like when we worked together at East Bay Parks, you were always on this commission, so it certainly has been for a while. But, yeah, it's quite a, quite a time-consuming commitment to be on the commission, of course. And Brian has a family, he has a full-time job, he's a planner himself, and I just really want to acknowledge his commitment and thank him for doing so. I'm sure others will be able to do that later, but I got to go first, so thank you, Brian. I also want to acknowledge our new Commissioner, Commissioner Gorn. Is it David Gorn? Nice to meet you. Hopefully, we can meet in person sometime soon. But thank you also for making the commitment and volunteering your time to give back to your community. And then finally, thanks to all of you for what you do. You're all volunteers, you choose to do this, you're committed to your community, and our planning commission is obviously, it's one of the more important institutions of city government, and, and the charge that you have to create vision for our community and then to help implement that vision in our community. So I appreciate what you guys do, Jill and her staff, I know do, and the council absolutely appreciates the work that you guys do and devoting your time to this, which is a lot of time and can be tedious, I understand. And so I do want to make a couple of comments today. I actually come with a positive message tonight, if you can imagine that. I think it's positive. I hope, it's a message of hope, I hope. So it's been a tough year, and like a lot of people, you know, I, well, maybe not like a lot of people, but the end of the year certainly gave me some time to take some time off and get away and reflect and get away from work and try to get away from COVID or thinking about COVID. And so I did that and, you know, spent time recharging and kind of following what was happening on our national stage and talking with people and, you know, getting ready for 2021. We all said we couldn't wait for 2020 to get over, and now 2021 is here, and maybe we're all saying we can't wait for 2021 to get over, I don't know. But I also spent time reading, and I gravitated, believe it or not, towards some of the classics of your profession or your profession as a commissioner, the planning profession. I'm not exactly sure why I did, but I did. So I just wanted to acknowledge three books that I spent time with over the break that I think are classics of the profession. Jill might disagree with me, we should watch her facial expression and see if she agrees or not. So first is The City in History by Lewis Mumford. So I don't know if you guys have heard of that book, but it's, it's a classic, to be sure. The second is The Death and Life of Great American Cities, Jane Jacobs, which I'm just starting that one. So I got through Lewis Mumford, which, if you know the book, it's not an easy read, and so you don't get through that book in a hurry. So it took me a long time, but it's very rewarding. And, and I'm just getting to the Jane Jacobs book, but they both came out about the same time, 1961, very interesting books. And then the final one, a little bit older, still a classic, Garden Cities of Tomorrow, Ebenezer Howard, early 1900, I think, a little easier read. I did finish that, you can read that pretty quickly, probably quaint by today's standards, but certainly important contributions to the planning and environmental movement. So I bring that up, I recommend them for sure, good classics, but I bring that up because it's really those books that kind of inspired my thought or my feeling that there's a positive here coming. And, yeah, I just can't, I just really believe, especially after reading the Mumford book, that, that's, you know, we're on the verge of major change here nationally in this country, and just as, it feels like we're at the beginning of a new era. We're just, we're just, I just can't see that we're coming out of this pandemic and it's, and it's going to be the same. The world's going to change, I mean, we've all noticed that, we've said things are going to change, there's going to be a new normal, all the cliches. But when you go back and read history, it really starts to crystallize how that will probably happen. And so it just feels like, I don't know if it's tomorrow or by August, when the vaccine's plentiful, or when, it might take a few years. As you guys know, in planning, things don't happen quickly. And so it might take a little while, but it just feels like when people, when we start to come out of hibernation, there is just going to be mind-boggling what's going to happen. You know, it's just, it's one, you know, once every hundred years, we get a pandemic like this. So as I read through Lewis Mumford, and I really realized that that seems to be the pattern. And so I, I think there's just going to be this amazing opportunity for people, for families, for nonprofits, for government, for social, you know, new social connection, new ways of doing business, especially for entrepreneurship, I believe. I think we're going to see an entrepreneurial spirit that we just have never seen before. So, so good things coming, I really believe that. And so what does that mean for Half Moon Bay? And, well, we're, we're part of that, we're part of the nation, part of the state, we're who we are, we're a city, we're a community, and this gets back to what, what we do here. You guys are a big part of, of planning our community, creating the community we want to be, and participating and implementing the community we want to be. So knowing that good things are on the horizon, I obviously, I think we need to embrace it and be ready for all that. And so we're doing that, and I, I want to just call to your attention what I think is really going to be the council's kind of signature community engagement effort this year, and hopefully this effort is what kind of embraces what's coming and puts us in the forefront, really, and positions us in a, in a way to, to embrace what comes out of this, you know, what, how are people going to want to interact? How are people going to want to work and go to restaurants and so forth and so on? And so obviously, the pandemic has been a massive crisis, and it's been more than just a health crisis, it's been an economic crisis, and so we have an opportunity here. So we presented this to council at the last meeting, I don't know if some of you saw it or not, but we're calling it the Coastside Recovery Initiative. It's city-led, obviously, and hopefully some, some priorities and strategies, you know, specific to the city will come out of that. But, but we see beyond the city borders for this initiative, for sure. We are a coast side, and so we will, we will start with that larger umbrella. But we're going to kick this off February 11 with an open house. And the idea of the open house is to get the community together and generate some enthusiasm, kind of in the way I just tried to do, that the future looks good, and have a conversation with the community about, you know, about the future of Half Moon Bay and specific, you know, pretty specific to recovery, economic recovery and recovery, community recovery, recovery from the pandemic. But a big focus on economic recovery, which is obviously part of planning and a big part of community development, your world, Jill's world, is economic recovery. So we start with this big open house, and I want to encourage you all to come. That was the conclusion of all this positive message. I think it would be great if all the planning commissioners came, and being that you guys are, you know, prominent leaders in the community, please feel free to invite two or three friends or other people in the community, I think the more the merrier at this meeting, February 11, at six o'clock. We're putting together the itinerary for the meeting now, we have several people working on that, and we think it's going to be interesting and a lot of fun, and it will then drive the initiative, which is the formation of a task force. So we do plan to form an economic recovery task force, maybe 12 to 15 people that will meet periodically for, say, you know, a year, maybe two years, and come up with initiatives, priorities, strategies, et cetera. Am I still on? I just lost it.
You're fine, you're still here.
Okay. For the council, for the coast side, but obviously for the planning commission and the council to consider going forward, you know, you just approved your LCP, that's a very long-term vision, and then the pandemic happened, and I think, again, I think this recovery effort and being ahead of it, the timing could not be better. And so it really syncs up, I think, with the LCP that'll eventually be certified by the coastal commission, and as we come out of this, I think the two will really work hand in hand. So I just wanted to pump that one up a little bit, February 11, six o'clock. I hope some of you can, obviously, it's virtual, very easy to go, you don't have to jump in your car, and that'll kick this initiative off. So those were the comments I wanted to make. Again, thank you for what you do. Thank you, Brian, hopefully I see you around in person at some point, and you can always contact me about whatever's going on at the Park District if you want to. And again, welcome, Commissioner Gorn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's always great to have a chief of administration who reads, and after the 2020, I'm ready to get Kafka and Poe off of my bookshelf, and I like the books you described, I've read Mumford, but the others will be new. So that's new, old, and I like new, old, that's.
And there is, I just started the Jane Jacobs book, so I'll, I can give my book review some other day, but there is a documentary which is really easy to watch, I recommend that, it was, came out in 2016, so I, about Jane Jacobs' life in New York City, so I would highly recommend that as a, as a starting point.
City Manager Book Report, could be a new agenda item. So, okay, thank you very much. And Bridget, do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the public comment?
Commissioner Hernandez has his hand raised, I'm not sure if he's going to speak now or after your acknowledgement.
We haven't gotten to acknowledge David yet, but that's coming up, Rick. Was this a public comment thing?
I just wanted to acknowledge Brian Holt before he left the meeting, so.
We aren't there, but we'll, we'll get you in, I promise, before me. Okay, so first, let me just close the public comment period and move into our planning commission business, the first of which is the acknowledgement of Brian's service. So I have my own thoughts about that. Brian may want to share a thought or two, staff, I don't know if you wanted to speak on this item, it's on the agenda, do you want to, shall we spare you a moment to share your thoughts?
Chair Benjamin, I think we'll reach out to Brian separately. You have, I really think Brian coming tonight is fabulous, and we're glad that he's here to hear this from you. Bridget has made a plaque, and there's other things that are happening in the background, and Brian will, will hear all about it from, from us separately.
Very good. I, yeah, just wanted to follow the agenda report model, so thank you for that. I have a few thoughts, but one of my prerogatives is to wait and hear from my colleagues, and since, Brian, I wonder if you'd like to hear from the others before we give you the four, assuming you want a four. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Hernandez, unless you want to go first.
Actually, I think I would like to go first, since Bob's still here, and Bob's, Bob's time is precious, and I always appreciate getting Bob's book recommendations, but I just want to start off and say congratulations, Commissioner Gorn. I hope you'll be a welcome addition to the commission, I've enjoyed it thoroughly, and I want to thank all of my other commissioners. Bob, thank you for your words, and I'll say I just take a little bit of pride in knowing that I had a little bit of heart of helping bringing you to Half Moon Bay. So, so I'm glad that, I'm glad that I've been able to do that, that wasn't necessarily part of my role as a planning commissioner, but, but I certainly appreciate that. I'm going to give a book recommendation, this is a book called The Country in the City by Richard Walker, a geographer at UC Berkeley, and I think it really kind of helps define why I was on the planning commission, what my goal is, and what I'm going to continue to focus on, is that I feel strongly that COVID, climate change, and just really everything that we're dealing with right now shines a very bright spotlight on the importance of our public spaces. And I feel strongly that Half Moon Bay is one of the most important public spaces that serves the entire Bay Area. Our shorelines, our trails, our hillside parks, mid peninsula region, open space district, you know, everything we do, I often say, you know, we're sort of a village surrounded by a national park, and, you know, so much of what we do, we're so blessed to live here, but so much of the value in our community is in our public spaces. And I feel strongly about the need to protect those public spaces, protect investment in those public spaces, and to, to also provide for growth in our community, that means housing and business and everything else within our developed urban footprint that doesn't impact those public spaces. So I'm really grateful for the time I spent on the planning commission, before that, as a park and recreation commissioner, and as a general plan advisory committee member. And I really feel like, you know, I ticked off a lot of the things that I wanted to tick off. You know, we got the general plan through, we got a parks master plan through, we got a trails master plan through, and those are really significant accomplishments. So I'm leaving feeling like I've done what I need to do, and I'm, I'm very happy about that, I thank all my other commissioners, and I look forward to seeing where everything goes, and, and no doubt, I'll continue to be around.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I'll be back, but right now, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Hernandez.
I didn't mean to jump the gun, but I have to say, it's been a pleasure serving with you for the last four years. One of the things that I've been impressed with, in my goodness gracious, five-plus years of service here, is the increasing quality of people and, that have been brought to the table over the last few years, and I have to say, your contribution has been pretty significant. You know, from the general planning process in the beginning, you've been somebody who I've always found to help anchor me as a non-professional planning commissioner, a non-professional planner, with fact, reason, what do other communities do, what do other planners do, what do other planning commissioners think about? And it's been a fantastic part of my education, and frankly, it's been, the city's been blessed to have your participation and your guiding hand helping us through this. So take my hat off, if I was wearing a hat, I'd take it off, but I just want to say thank you for your service, and when we can meet socially appropriately, I will be happy to provide you with a refreshing beverage to celebrate your service.
Thank you very much, Rick. Any other commissioners wish to speak at this time? Commissioner Polgar, you have the floor.
I would echo a lot of what Rick just said. I've been just grateful for your tremendous contributions, and it's been, it's so wonderful to have somebody who is a kindred spirit when it comes to public spaces and public access and all, it just, it's, it warms my heart, and it always has. And my favorite thing, or one of my favorite things about participating in meetings with you, is that I always wait after you speak, because then I can say ditto. And just like all the things you just said now, I would say ditto to all those visionary, wonderful things, you are so, you have such great vision and great, and you get things done in all, and it is such a benefit to our community. You have accomplished a tremendous amount, and I am truly, truly grateful personally as representing the community as part of the planning commissioner, it's been a joy to be on this commission with you. So thank you, thank you so much. I love the photo and the map in the background, because I feel like those are just so who you are. You truly give to all of the community, locally, regionally, state, everywhere, through your work, so thank you, thank you.
Here, here, Commissioner Polgar, thank you. Vice Chair Riddick, you have the floor.
Thank you. Brian, when I first joined planning commission, you were our chair for that first Brian, when I first joined planning commission, you were our chair for that first year. And honestly, I was inspired throughout that by, by the, the passion for the coast and the dedication to the values and the LCP and the coastal act, especially perhaps around access to the coast. And I learned a lot from your leadership there. I felt I was, I was very lucky to be able to work side by side with you. And your, your courtesy and professionalism towards the, the public has also been a joy to watch. So thank you for everything. I, I know I'll see you soon out on the, out on the bluffs and the trails. And best of luck with, with your next steps.
Very nice. So I'd like to add, so I'll begin as, if I can plagiarize Commissioner Polgar, ditto to everything that my colleagues have said. But I, in addition to that, Brian, I'd like to say thanks in a more personal way. The time that we've had together working has been a little unusual compared to my relationships with, with other commissioners. Because there have been times here and there where we have not seen eye to eye on things. And that's an important and natural and valuable part of the process of a commission arriving at decisions. And I'd just like to compliment you on the way that you bring those differences of opinion through conversation. And I think the decisions we've made have been better for those exchanges. I think you're, you bring a grace to the way you approach things. You know how to put differences behind you quickly. And your opinions are not based on emotion or flip. They're based on a deep knowledge and a clear understanding of your preferences for what you believe are in the best interest of the city. I couldn't ask for a commissioner with better qualities to bring to those kinds of decisions. And you're a lot of fun to spar with. So thank you very much for all the times that we've disagreed, as much as the times far more frequently that we have agreed. Your place would be empty except Commissioner Gorn is here to fill it. But you're unique and your contributions make those some pretty big shoes to step into. So good luck with your next adventures. We look forward to seeing you at our meetings. And don't be surprised if we try to rope you back into work on some task forces or something.
I'd be, be happy to do that. And thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. I always have enjoyed verbally sparring with you. And then just, you know, my last comment, I just want to say a deep heartfelt thank you to staff, to Jill, to Bridget, to Brittany, to everybody. You guys have the best planning staff here, so it just, you know, you can really rely on them. And I think that's just so important. And seeing the transition from where we were to where we are now, just really impressive. Thank you, everybody.
Before you go, I'd like to share with my colleagues and with the members of the public the inscription, the draft of the inscription that will appear on Brian's plaque. It says, "The city of Half Moon Bay Planning Commission acknowledges the generosity, dedicated leadership, and thoughtful vision that Mr. Holt brought to his service, especially his tenure through stewardship of the local coastal land use plan, bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and the parks master plan, which will protect the environment and provide the citizens of Half Moon Bay and the coast side with opportunities to be enjoyed for generations to come." So my hat's off to you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you all. With that, have a good night.
Commissioner Gorn, I did mean to leave you out of the dialogue. Did you, did you want to say anything? I didn't want to.
Well, I mean, I know I just got here, but when I leave, is retire as planning commissioner, I want everybody to say the same things about me that they just said about Brian, right? Because that was, that's pretty awesome.
You get to earn it.
All right. I will just offer, Commissioner Gorn, I'm available at any time. And as items come up that have been before the commission before or anything else for background or for any conversations.
I appreciate that.
I extend that anytime.
Definitely. Thank you.
All right. Barring any further discussion on this item. All right, we see Brian, thank you again. And we'll move on with our next item of business, which is commission reorganization. And at this point, we turn our camera to zoom in on our new commissioner, Commissioner Gorn. I'd like to share that my first contact with David was about the time I joined the planning commission. He stopped by my house and did some photography. And it turned out to be an interesting piece from his time at the Half Moon Bay Review. And I think I sent a copy to my mother. So thank you, David, for that lovely photograph. And in his tenure as the, the editor of the review, we've had a chance to work together 15 or 20 years ago. I enjoyed the interaction. I felt like he was careful, insightful. And I think he'll be very pleased with what he brings to our commission. Those shoes that Brian is leaving for him to fill are big, but David's got some big feet. So he'll manage the job just great. So welcome. Welcome, Commissioner Gorn.
Thank you.
Please.
Well, so I, do you guys want to know who I am? I have, I've lived here for about 25 years. I've raised a couple of kids here and loved it so much that I'm now raising a couple more kids. My little kids right now are, the two are older and grown. One of them still lives in Half Moon Bay, one lives in San Francisco. And then the two younger ones are five and seven. So it's life number two. So I'm looking forward to this planning commission. I worked at the review for a long time. I, you know, people think of editors and reporters as knowing so much, as being experts, but really it's just talking to a lot of people and figuring out what's going on. And so, you know, that's, I can't duplicate the experience, sort of the fund of knowledge of Brian. But what I can do is work really hard. And that's what I hope to bring to the table here. So if you think about it, a newspaper, there's a lot of work. Like what you do is you find all the rumors, you gather all the information, and you figure out what's going on in your city. And then you investigate and find out if it's what's really going on in your city. And then you're sort of the conduit to other people. So it's like doing everybody's work for them to present them with what's going on in the city. And so I, I sort of see the planning commission as a similar thing in that most people don't have the time to go into the details and the, and the, all the arcane details of big projects. And so that's my job, as I see it, is to really look into everything, make sure everything is right. And then sort of be the conduit for, you know, to present to people so that they don't have to do it. So I'm really looking forward to it. I think it's, you know, I obviously love this town and have always loved this town. And I'm looking forward to contributing. That's very grateful for the opportunity to do this.
Well, Persians have an expression, when someone is well-sitted to do a job, they say it kisses their hand. And I think that's what we've got here with stuff on our general plan, our, our implementation plan for the LCP, zoning ordinance, other elements. There's, there's plenty of stuff and command of those details. This will speak to you. This is almost a Talmudic undertaking. So you're, you're in the right place. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any commissioners have any other thoughts or shall we move on? All good. In that case, I come to my favorite part of this meeting, which is when I get to hand this thing off to somebody else. Before I do, I'll just say I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to chair the commission, this commission. You've been brilliant. You've worked hard. We've produced some important results that I think will stand the test of time. The city doesn't update its LCP very often. So hopefully this will be a lasting contribution. We, of course, are waiting to hear what the coastal commission has to say, but I hope it goes well. And you've been such a joy to interact with at these meetings and we used to be able to interact outside. And I feel like we've had a Herculean effort from our staff to get these things through, not just on the LCP, but certainly on the LCP. By now you will have read the letter that I sent on your behalf to the city council on that subject. But also on the other items, you know, you've been very patient while we hammered out details and brought a micro, you know, a magnifying glass in to look at the minutia of a project. And you've done it with grace and you've, you've humored me very kindly and I thank you for it. And with that, I'd like to open the nominations for the chair for the 2021 year.
I'd like to nominate, if Commissioner Riddick is interested in serving, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Riddick to be vice, Commissioner Riddick to be the chair of the planning commission.
That's excellent. Is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved in second. And is there any discussion of this motion?
Well, I.
He needs to agree, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Riddick, you have the floor. What do you think about this?
Rick, thank you for asking. I'd be, I'd be honored to serve.
Okay, that's a great comment. I'll give you a preview. I'm planning to vote in favor of that motion. Could we have a roll call?
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you, colleagues.
And you now have the chair.
Well, I, I have brought a gavel just in case from the kitchen.
Maybe something bigger.
You know, I, I, I'm vividly aware of what it is to follow Jimmy Benjamin as chair of this planning commission. I've admired Jimmy. I've admired your dedication and thoroughness and incredibly hardworking approach to, to the chairmanship, but also the commission in general. I, I've been inspired by it. I'll do my best to emulate you. And I'm, I'd like the rest of Half Moon Bay. I'm very happy you're signed up for another four years. All right. Well, our, our next item of business is a nomination for vice chair of the commission.
So by seniority of the last person who, the person who's most senior on the planning commission, who hasn't served as either chair or vice chair, typically we would offer this to Commissioner Polgar if she's interested in serving. Commissioner Polgar, are you interested in serving as vice chair?
Yes, I would be interested.
Then I would nominate Commissioner Polgar to be the vice chair of the planning commission.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Benjamin. Bridget, I guess a roll call is in order.
Yes. Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Chair, chair, I should say Commissioner Benjamin. Sorry, my, my list is all mixed up now. We're.
Whoever I am, yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Benjamin. And Chair Riddick.
Yeah, definite yes.
Five zero.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Polgar.
Yay.
And our, I believe our last item in our commission reorganization is the appointment of a planning commissioner to serve as liaison to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, which I have done for nearly the last two years. And it's, it's an enjoyable thing and not, not a, not a burden, but the BPAC meets typically every other month. And, and it's, it's, it's for everything they do and advise on is for a good cause, of course. So I'd be happy to, do, do we want to ask for commissioners who might be interested in volunteering?
I would like to know through the chair, if Commissioner Hernandez would consider this.
You know, I would love to consider it. My wife, who has been appointed a Parks and Recreation member, is planning to participate in that body. So I would politely decline if, if there's somebody else who has a strong interest in this.
Very good. Well, in that case, let me ask a follow on question if I might through the chair.
Please.
Is this a, if this is a, a job that the person can hit the ground running with, it might be a nice opportunity for Commissioner Gorn to reach out. But I also don't want to put you on the spot, David.
No, I would do it. That's, that's definitely an interest of mine.
I nominate Commissioner Gorn to that position.
Great. Commissioner Gorn is nominated. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Very good. And I guess we should have a vote, please, Bridget.
Sure. Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Five zero.
Very good. Well, David, you, you just missed a BPAC meeting last week, so I think the next one is in March.
We'll get, we'll get them set up with the information over to the Public Works Department. And so you're notified. Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
Jill, I guess we are on to the, the body of the retreat now. Are, are you going to introduce that for us?
Yes, and thank you and congratulations, Chair Riddick and.
Thank you for that.
Holder. And I think Commissioner Gorn, what happened to Chair Riddick just happened to you with.
I got promoted.
But I think, I think it'll be fine. And we're happy to help you get oriented as well. So, and that was, that was excellent. One of the things we were going to start this retreat with was, I was going to talk a little bit about the significance of planning and the planning commission. But our city manager, I think, touched upon that so much in his opening comments. And then in acknowledging Commissioner, outgoing Commissioner Holt, I think, I think you have, have wrapped around that. And we'll just go ahead and plunge right into our retreat agenda. And we're really happy to be doing this tonight. And you see a lot of faces on the screen and you'll, you'll find out why in just a few minutes. Brittany, are you ready to? Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. And so here we are. And we haven't had a retreat for quite a few years. And we're happy to be here, really to provide information and support to the commission for this first of its kind Zoom retreat. Our retreat will include three parts. Each will have a presentation of relevant materials, followed by a pause to allow for public comment. And then, of course, commission discussion. We note that some staff may have weather-related technical difficulties and perhaps the commissioners may as well. So, so far, so good, but we will do our best to stand course and yet we can also adjust if needed. So. So so far, so good. But we will do our best to stand course and yet we can also adjust if needed. So just try to communicate through texting or other other means to staff if you're having trouble. And so without any further ado, we'd like to get started with this first section, which we're calling the basics. This is about the Planning Commission, its work and staff's support of it. And we hope you will see one of the overarching themes tonight is bringing the community into the planning process, which is something that the commission is so mindful about doing and your staff is passionate about. And next slide. So we, this was where I was going to talk about how important you all are. Let's let's move right on into to starting this section. And so our incoming Commissioner Gorn has has actually already demonstrated this this first slide. We wanted to give the commissioners a chance to go around and just in just a minute, not, this doesn't need to take too long, but just remind us about each other, about your interest in planning for Half Moon Bay and how it is that you are willing to work this hard as a volunteer for your community. We as staff are very humbled by it and appreciate it so much. And so I'll turn it back to the Chair. So you can go around to the commissioners who haven't chimed in yet about this.
I'm sorry, Jill. So your vision was that each of us would would speak about that for a few minutes?
Just briefly, just touch on it. Yeah.
All right. Well, since I have the floor, I will take a stab at that. I moved to Half Moon Bay initially in 1980. And we lived here only for a few months, though, as luck would have it. And I came back in 1989 and moved into this house where I've resided ever since. So that's nearly 32 years now. And always been interested in the workings of the city government, which during during the 90s was a very acrimonious field. When a lot of the giant in scope land use questions were being hotly debated. I commuted from here to Santa Clara for oh, God, for more than 20 years every day and was fortunate enough to be able to retire about eight years ago and was was among other interests in retirement, looking for ways to give back to Half Moon Bay, which had been so good to me and my family. Like David, I raised, my wife and I raised two kids here in the public schools and and this is, the Planning Commission has been rewarding for me as a way to try to to give back to Half Moon Bay and and help to steer it towards a future that's even as rosy as as what we've enjoyed here. Rosier, I will say. What other other commissioners would like to say a few words?
Commissioner Benjamin's raising his hand.
Go ahead, Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. So just by way of introduction, this is my fourth term on the Planning Commission, beginning this year. I became involved when a proposal to put a community park in front of the wastewater treatment plant arrived unceremoniously without much advance notice to some of the community. And the process of working through how we felt about that was a local organizational challenge. And when it was resolved at the other end, a couple of members of the City Council invited me to join the General Plan Advisory Committee. One of them was Chair Ruddock's ex. And so that was the beginning of my involvement in public service here. That was 1993, 1997. Since that time, I have, I worked at HP for many years, but I pursued a doctorate in industrial engineering, engineering management and probabilistic risk analysis. My current interest with Half Moon Bay is to understand the resources that we have here, the way that they can be consumed in a sustainable fashion and to be sure that we are not imposing excessive risks of depleting them. That and the pleasure of working with public-minded citizens and staff is the reason that I do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Polgar?
Um, well, I moved here with my husband and son about 12 years ago. And we just wanted to move here. We moved here actually in tandem with our very good friends, Rick and his wife and his daughters at the same time. And so we wanted to be in a community like Half Moon Bay. It's just, it's a wonderful community and that was inspiring to us. And it's been just an amazing place to be even with the people and the and the environment here, everything. And so and in terms of being involved with the serving on the Planning Commission, for me, that that fits very closely with the work that I do. I've I've worked for many years now in in natural resource management, but prior to that, more in public access. I worked for the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission. And so I worked a lot on public access around San Francisco Bay. And then also in planning for sea level rise with local governments around San Francisco Bay and helping communities think about how to prepare for that. So now I work with the San Mateo Resource Conservation District on coast with the coast side communities. And and so I, a lot of this is very close to my heart in terms of the type of work that the Planning Commission does. And specifically, I think I, you know, I was asked to serve in part because of the on the Planning Commission because of the work on the General Plan Advisory Committee and to help with the kind of shepherding the the plan through the later part, the later stages. And and certainly, I think that, you know, it's a very important part of my role here. And I was speaking from the heart when I mentioned that it's, you know, the public access aspect of our work like that, to me, is very near and dear to my heart. And so that is something that inspires me to do this work. I think that we are blessed to live here and we are blessed to be able to provide such an amazing place for all Californians and throughout the, you know, beyond to to visit and to experience kind of what is there kind of a public resource? And I think it's just so important as part of our role. And then I also am very inspired by our community and want to see it be be economically and environmentally viable and sustainable. And so that inspires me every, you know, throughout all of our work here on the Planning Commission. So those are my reasons. And I have to say, I've had, it's been an amazing experience to be working with the commissioners and staff throughout. I've been on the commission now, I think, two years. So yeah, those are my, I guess, my inspirations and reasons.
Thank you, Vice Chair Polgar. Commissioner Hernandez, would you like to the floor?
Certainly. So my journey to Half Moon Bay starts with a dog. We used to live in Palo Alto and there aren't a lot of places you can walk a dog in the Bay Area on the beach. And Poplar Beach was one of those few places. And so we used to make the sojourn here on weekends and my wife would always say, you know, I want a house right here on this spot on this street. And I said, that's never going to happen. But a few years later, we, not only did we plant our roots in Half Moon Bay, we recruited our friend Sarah and they added to move to Half Moon Bay with us and join us in this venture. So it's been, it's been a great adventure for us. And you know, the things we love about Half Moon Bay, it's a small town, the open space, the stunning locale. And, you know, it's the things that I think draw most of us to Half Moon Bay are those things. In terms of my willingness to serve, about eight years ago, the city started down the general plan update process. And my good friend Sarah, Vice Chair Polgar, was recruiting me to help participate in this process. And I have to say, at the time, the process wasn't really going the way that many in the community wanted it to go. So, you know, I got involved. I was nominated by my good friend and neighbor, Deborah Ruddock, to join the Planning Commission. And, you know, I think we've, it's been wonderful for me to, you know, listen to people, listen to the community and be a channel for the folks who, you know, frankly, have strong opinions, but it's difficult for them to participate in the process and to participate in these public meetings. So but it's been, it's actually been something I've really enjoyed. And I really look forward to, you know, continuing the work that we've done over the last six years. You know, making Half Moon Bay more sustainable, more livable. And if it's possible, more spectacular and resilient in the face of all the challenges we have coming before us. So that's my background.
Well said, Commissioner Hernandez. Thank you for that. Commissioner Gorn, you gave an articulate intro a little while ago. Would you like to add to that?
Well, you know, I've had my little speech, but I would say that when you ask people what they love about this area, there's always, people say the same two things all the time. It's so beautiful and it's this small town feel. Everybody loves the small town feel. You, you know, this is one of the few places where you drive down this very busy road and somebody clicks their headlights to like let you in to like, people are nice to each other here. And so at the same time, you know, we need to grow. And so it's a, it's finding that balance. It's having that growth and keeping that small town feel and keeping the beauty that's here because that's why people come here. So that's why I'm here.
Well said. Well said. Thank you, David. Jill, shall I turn it back to you then?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And Brittany, we can move to the next slide now. Bringing it back to staff for the rest of this part one of the basics. And staff's inspired by the commission. And so we really thank you for sharing with with everyone, with each other and everyone about your commitment. We see how connected you are to the work and it motivates our service. We want to note that the commission is well-supported. The primary staffing to the commission includes the city attorney's office. As you see, our deputy city attorney, Winter King, is here tonight. A public works department and in particular, the city engineer, they're not here tonight because we just don't have time to cover the full scope of what they do, along with what we're really going to focus on here with our department, the Community Development Department, will be what we're going to hone in a bit on tonight because just about all the work we do is really related to implementing or supporting the commission's work. And so almost all of us from staff are here tonight. So you're seeing some familiar faces as well as a few that you don't usually see at commission meetings. The exceptions, folks, you weren't seeing Ben Corrales, our permit technician, is actually at a GIS training tonight. So we really try to develop staff and so he couldn't make this and he would have loved to, but we'll try to bring Ben into a planning commission meeting later this year. And Doug is still here. Good hanging in there. So everyone else is here. And what we're going to do now for the rest of this section of your, this presentation tonight is each staff member is going to take turns. They're going to introduce themselves and provide an overview very quickly of their primary area of focus in relationship to the Planning Commission's oversight, which is really related to most of this department's operations. And we're going to start from the broad and most general of our practices, which is advanced planning. And Brittany Cosalino is going to take it away. Brittany, it's all yours.
Good evening, commissioners, and welcome, Commissioner Gorn. My name is Brittany Cosalino. Commissioner Gorn might remember me as Brittany Labor. I am an associate planner. And I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about my favorite topic, advanced planning. So advanced planning is our long-range policy work that helps support carrying out our citywide goals and being consistent with state and federal laws. And there's a couple of different components to this. So first, you've heard some mention of this tonight. You are all mostly familiar with our local coastal program. This is a requirement because the city of Half Moon Bay is entirely within the coastal zone. So we have an obligation to comply with the California Coastal Act, and that is done through our local coastal program or LCP for short. And so the LCP has two components itself. First, the high-level policy document, which we just recently completed a comprehensive update of the Land Use Plan or LUP. And this is currently under review by the Coastal Commission. And then the LUP is carried out by the implementation plan with more specific regulations and codes. So that IP has three parts to it, the zoning code, zoning map, and subdivision code. And then we have our general plan. And this is another state-mandated citywide planning document for all local jurisdictions in California. And there are several required elements, several optional elements. And you'll see these two plans, the LCP and the general plan, often work in conjunction in Half Moon Bay. Since they do have some complementary or in some cases overlapping topics such as natural resource preservation, environmental hazards and safety and such. And there is a great graphic on that relationship that I would recommend looking at in chapter one of the LUP update that we just completed. And then we have a couple additional strategic plans that help further carry out our review of private and public projects, such as our capital improvement projects. And those are listed here. The Climate Action and Adaptation Plan is one that the city is currently working on. So you may see more of that in the coming year or so. And all of these advanced planning efforts are really foundational to the work that you do to help carry out city council priorities to kind of harness the public engagement process that we so often do with all of this work. And it establishes the standard of review for our current planning efforts, which Scott will talk about next.
Thanks, Brittany and Chair Ruddock, members of the Planning Commission. Welcome, Commissioner Gorn. My name is Scott Phillips, Associate Planner here at the city. And I'm going to give a brief intro to current planning. And kind of the main focus of current planning is implementation of the work the Planning Commission does in advanced planning that Brittany just wanted to teach you all on. And this is primarily done through development review of permits submitted at the city. And now, since the entire city is within the coastal zone, any any proposal that meets the definition of development requires a coastal development permit. So that's really our key discretionary permit here in Half Moon Bay. But at times, we do process variances and exceptions. And for conditional uses in certain parts of town, a use permit are also, use permits are also required. And for conditional uses in certain parts of town, a use permit are also, use permits are also required. Occasionally, we do receive applications for adjustments to lot lines through parcel maps, subdivisions, lot line adjustments. And story polls, as you can see on this slide. I have a nine-year-old daughter, and she asked me one day, Daddy, why don't all the houses get story polls? And it's only during certain circumstances, for example, if there's a variance requested. And her answer, her response was, oh, well, it's when there's a problem, right Daddy? And it's, no, that's not always the case, but you know, story polls are required from time to time. Now, as far as review of coastal development permits, the primary focus is consistent with the LCP. And there are many sections to the implementation plan or zoning ordinance. But some of the key ones are, you know, preservation of coastal resources. It is through our coastal resource conservation standards. Certain parts of town are considered visual resource areas, which there's a list of items that need to be looked at in those certain parts of town. And then of course, of course, coastal access, which is keystone to the Coastal Act, and making sure that coastal access is preserved or improved through the review of development. Next slide. Now, as far as the development review process, you'll see that on top of our list is public notice. And I included an image of a site posting on this slide, which is a code requirement, anytime an application is submitted, we're required to post a sign, and that really starts the public notice process. We actually go beyond that, and we'll, we will post an additional sign once a decision date is selected for whatever the review is. And then we also notice the neighbors, depending on the level of review, either within 300 feet of a site or 100 feet of the site. We also publish a notice in the newspaper, most of the times, the HME review, which I'm sure Mr. Commissioner Goran, no matter what the city submitting knows. And then as far as what takes place after an application is submitted, we start the completeness process, which includes routing plans to other departments and other agencies that may be interested in the project. And we compile all the comments received and present that to the applicant. And we're required to do that through the Permit Streamlining Act within 30 days. So that's, that's really the first step. And then, at times, technical studies are warranted, such as biological resource evaluations, which is very common here in Half Moon Basin. We do have several sensitive species that we need to be aware of, and we get our biologists involved in those certain circumstances. Some projects, we request the support from our Architectural Advisory Committee. And note that the AAC is advisory and assists us with design-related feedback, not only to the planning commission, but the Community Development Director, and at times, the city council. When preliminary review is needed on certain projects, at times, we'll go to the planning commission or city council for preliminary feedback before going to the commission for an actual decision. And that, that gets us some, that helps us with the review process to get a sense of where the planning commission, what their thoughts are on a particular project. So from time to time, we do that with, through the, through study sessions. Now, of course, you know, since we are here in California, the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, certainly plays a role. You know, the city has a responsibility for making determinations on CEQA, including development review projects. Now, and of course, the planning commission is involved in that, you know, whether or not a project is exempt from CEQA, or a more extensive environmental review process needs to take place. And Doug Garrison, our senior planner, is going to touch upon CEQA in the next couple of slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. I'm, good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Doug Garrison, Senior Planner. My background is mostly in natural resource management, environmental review, and I take on a lot of that here for the city. And obviously, we're not going to get too deep into CEQA tonight, but there's a couple of... CEQA's been around California Environmental Quality Act for 50 years, and there's still an awful lot of confusion about what it is and is not. And just to be clear, it's, it's not something that demands that you approve or not approve a project. It's a tool that we use to evaluate environmental impacts that could be caused by a project. Under state law, it has to be an open, transparent process where we establish a written record of how that decision was made. And the, we typically, it's focused on certain topics which are identified by the state as appropriate for review under CEQA. It used to be fairly common for cities to develop their own checklist of impacts, and they were all a bit different. You don't see too much of that anymore. Most, most cities just use the state list. And so the issue is, what are impacts? And there's been a bunch of court decisions, but essentially, it's effects on the environment, not on people. So that gets you into sometimes a little bit counterintuitive CEQA analysis. And it's important to remember that it's only one tool. We also use the general plan, the local coastal plan, zoning ordinance. This is just one tool of several that go into the process. Second part is, you have to determine if that impact is significant, less than significant. And not unsurprisingly, that was some of the earlier case law on that. People asked, well, what is a significant impact? And the judge got out his Webster's dictionary and said, well, it says here, significant is substantial, and have a nice day. So that's always kind of a tricky one, figuring out what is the threshold of significance. CEQA does encourage local jurisdictions to come up with their own thresholds that are appropriate for the community, hopefully that are, preferably can be quantified, they're measurable. It's a bit difficult with things like aesthetics, visual impacts, but we do our best. And then if you do have a significant impact, you're required to try and avoid that impact or to mitigate it to a less-than-significant impact. You don't have to make it go away, but you are supposed to mitigate it to less-than-significant or to the greatest extent feasible. Next slide. And, you know, some of the typical topics that we go through are air quality, emissions from a project, contribution to greenhouse gases, traffic circulation. This used to be a big one. We would look at traffic congestion, how it affects specific intersections and road segments. State, the last couple of years, said that's not an environmental impact, it's an inconvenience. So you're not allowed to evaluate that under CEQA anymore. Now you look at vehicle miles traveled and how that contributes to greenhouse gas emissions, essentially. That said, we still have general plan policies that deal with traffic congestion. So it doesn't go away, we just use a different mechanism to evaluate it. Geological hazards, that's another one where some litigation is a little counterintuitive. You would think that an impact might be building a house below an active landslide area. Turns out, according to the courts, that's not the impact. The impact is that building the house makes it more geologically unstable. So it's kind of, kind of a two-step process, and it evolves over time. We look at things that are adequate infrastructure, sewer, water, roads, schools, parks. So as I mentioned, one of the, where these things go sideways a lot is trying to figure out, is it something we're supposed to be looking at under CEQA, or is it something else? As I mentioned, traffic, not so much congestion anymore, more traffic-related emissions, air emissions. A lot of people get, and as anybody's been on the planning commission knows, if you want to get people worked up to start talking about traffic and parking, but they assume those are things that, that you would go over in environmental impact report, and the truth is, it's not subject to CEQA. Next slide. So I think this is some food for thought. Where, where things go wrong a lot of times is, there's a project that there's some momentum to take a vote on it. We're close, but people are still a little uncomfortable. And we start trying to modify the mitigation measures or add conditions. And sometimes, but well, always, that's a place where you don't want messy writing. It's really specific things you have to cover in mitigation measure. And it's just always a good idea to keep that in mind. Sometimes, you know, staff doesn't want to stop the momentum when the planning commission's ready to do something, but sometimes we may kind of recommend that we get together with the city attorney and go over the wording on a proposed mitigation measure, just to make sure that it's, it meets all these standards. So some real common problems, you come up with mitigation measures, you have to ask yourself, is it actually feasible to do this? You get a lot of these from even professional environmental consultants, where they haven't really thought that through. A common one is to say, well, there, there might be an impact, but we'll, we'll conduct a biological study to see and come up with an answer later. And you can't do that. You have to be a little more concrete. Preferably, you identify the impact now and mitigation measure for it now. Now, there are some projects that go on for 100 years that I've worked on, where you, you do have studies in the future, but right up front in the EIR, you identify what that standard is for it to be a significant impact, and how, what the range of mitigation measures would be. Another common problem, what they call the Nexus Proportionality Test. There has to be a direct connection between the impact and the mitigation measure. Somebody wants to fill in a wetland, you can't mitigate it by giving the city money to put in some electric vehicle chargers. It has to be related to the wetlands damage. And also has to be proportional. Sometimes, development, maybe they're responsible for 20% of an impact. That's the most you can make them contribute to the mitigation. You have to find other ways to fund the mitigation, unless they volunteer, essentially. And the other thing is, can the impact reduction actually be measured? Can you confirm that the mitigation measure worked? Did it reduce the impact to less-than-significant? And that's where the wording gets really important, and I recommend sometimes we slow down at the, at the planning commission, before we just start changing things and make sure we've, we've got all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. And also, we have to be clear about sort of when does the mitigation get implemented. Typically, it has to happen before the impact happens. Some impacts happen under cumulative conditions way off in the future, it gets a little tricky. And so those are just the basics of CEQA. Next slide. That's kind of related, this gets back to what Scott was talking about with current planning. But one of the, the key is, when I mentioned that we create a written record through CEQA. A lot of this gets incorporated into the resolution. That's the stack of paper that's attached to the staff report you get. And it's, it's pretty tedious reading, and it's, it takes some discipline to go through it, but it's very important. The resolution is really the legal record for a project in a lot of ways. And there's a section of findings. And that's where we, we go through, and we, in sort of abbreviated fashion, we show that the project's consistent with general plan policies, local coastal plan, zoning. And also, we go through all the CEQA findings. Did we follow all the procedures? Did we identify all the reasonably foreseeable impacts? Have we mitigated those impacts to less-than-significant level? That's where the evidence goes into the record to show that we've done everything. And so it's something, like I said, a lot of, if you're in a hurry, it's pretty tedious, and people tend to sort of skim through that, but it's worth taking a look at. The other part of it are conditions of approval, and those include the mitigation measures. Those are incorporated as conditions. There are other conditions that, some of them are just standard conditions that almost all projects have. A lot of those are tied back to other regulations, state water, air quality requirements for stormwater. We require that any new lighting has to be downward directed, that sort of thing. Others are specific to a project. If it's something that would create visual impacts, we might have some requirements for landscaping or things like that, limiting the lighting on the site. And so, this is kind of how we comply with the findings, in, to a certain extent. The findings, say we've done this, provides the evidence that we've done it, and the conditions are where the rubber hits the road. That's where we make sure that a developer does everything they're supposed to do to make those findings true. And whether that's a, just a regular condition of approval or mitigation measure, it's all linked together, and, and again, it's government writing. We apologize for that, but it's, it is necessary. And I apologize in that because of not having any electricity, I haven't reviewed what order the slides are in, so I'm not sure who's taking over next.
I will be happy to, thank you Doug, to facilitate the transition from what you just presented to Ferris Hicks, our building inspector, who is going to talk about permits and inspections. And this is really what planning entitlements typically turn into, is a building permit. And how, how the entitlement gets effectuated is really important. So Ferris, welcome to the planning commission, it's, it's your turn.
Great, thank you Jill and Doug for that wonderful introduction. First off, I'd love to thank the commissioners and the residents of Half Moon Bay into a little glimpse of what I do on a daily basis. First off, I'd like to take off, Ben is our permit tech that Jill had talked about earlier. And I assist Ben in many ways. Ben has issued over 500 permits. That's a lot of permits, and that's a lot of work. And you'll understand a little bit more. Some of the permits that he does cover are over-the-counter permits. And those are basically some of the easier ones, such as roofs, water eaters, windows, sheds, etc. But the bulk of his work comes down to the, the more typical kind of permits that we all think about. And those are ones that he has to send to the different departments, such as planning, engineering, development. engineering, development, ones that our commission gives feedback on. I guess to understand, all the different departments have to give their input to give a quality plan check development. And in that, we have a lot of safety code compliance and all the facets of that. Consistency codes. By doing a proper plan check ensures that all applications, applications are processed in a fair and consistent manner. And that's where I come in. For every permit, I do two to three inspections per permit. And those are for the basic ones. When we get into new construction, I'm doing more in the area of 10, 12, 15 inspections for new construction. So if you do the math, which I'm not going to do for you right now, that's a lot of inspections. So we're very busy and, and I want you to know how hard staff works for you to get all this done on a daily basis. Consistency, this is the most important part about what I do. And my role is to ensure that all life safety, building codes, planning, engineering, and entitlements are met in the field whenever I'm out there. And with that said, I'd like to thank you for your time. Next.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you Ferris. Good evening commissioners and welcome Commissioner Gorn. My name is Joe Butcher. I'm the community preservation specialist. I've been with the city. This will be my eighth year. What community preservation is, it's a little bit of a mix between code enforcement and then just working with our community. More specifically, I'll get into that. Education, a lot of the people in town are, I don't know that they've maybe committed some sort of code violation. That's where I come in is to educate our community members and sometimes even our commercial, commercial business owners or, or at least management that they've done some sort of violation and we work together and coordinate to be able to come up with some sort of reasonable timeline to mitigate whatever the violation is that, that's been observed. Now, the difference between myself and Ferris, Ferris as our building inspector and our public works inspector, the codes that he pays attention to are more public works and building, whereas I enforce and really work along with the entire municipal code. So that's everything from health and safety to, you know, noise violations to illegal dumping. It's kind of all over the place. If you look at the pictures on the slide, like these are two examples. I've got abandoned vehicles and an abandoned little clothing drop-off that have, are incredibly important condition and damaged and become what's called an attractive nuisance, which could, you know, it could promote people to want to play around or get into it or kids to get into it to get hurt. So really what I do is also work on a lot of public safety. That being said, I have to work hand in hand with all of other, other departments such as city manager's office and public works. If they see something out in the field that isn't necessarily something that they need to take care of, but I should be aware of, they'll get in contact with me so that we can work together to be able to get something taken care of. Again, for typically safety issues. Where planning commission is important with this is as Scott spoke about earlier, a lot of the times whenever there are study sessions on potential new development or, you know, new projects coming into the work, things will come up and there will end up being a condition of approval for this project to actually go through. There will be certain things that need to be done. Whereas if those things are not done, it could fall back to me and code enforcement to be able to talk to the applicant or the homeowner to make sure that they follow up on their obligations as per their commission, conditions of approval. Next slide please. Special efforts, as you guys know, with COVID, it's been a very interesting time and we're learning a lot and kind of running as we go. That being said, the beginning of COVID, I spent a lot of my time really working with the local businesses, making sure that they're following the, the county COVID protocols, the shutdowns, the, the masking, the, all, all the permits they need to have up and all of the protocols. But that also being said, as things become more relaxed, I've been working with the business owners to make sure that they're following along with the more relaxed protocols. Most recently, we've received some grant money that is going to be helping with some of the downtown restaurants to be able to have parklets, like temporary parklets and streeteries to where we can work with them to try to coordinate how they can have outdoor dining, still follow the COVID protocol where we can be supportive and also, you know, give them a little bit of money because at this time, COVID's really taken a, a major effect on a lot of our small businesses. And with community preservation, we want to make sure that we're not forgetting about those small businesses that we're here to help. And one of the other things I've worked on most recently, Jill and I and the rest of the staff have really been working towards a short-term rental ordinance. We've drafted up something. We've gone to a study session before. We'll bring it back. The reason why I've been involved in this so heavily, heavily is to do the research and really go along with the community input that we've received in the very beginning of this whole process to make sure that our short-term rental ordinance really falls in line with what our community wants. So currently I've already been doing the, the enforcement of what our regulations are as of now without having the ordinance in place. So it just made sense for me to be involved in this so that we can really stay with enforcement from the front to back through all of our short-term rental ordinance. So you guys will be seeing that in the future. So that's just a quick little rundown. Again, if you guys ever need anything, if you get complaints about anything, that's where I'm at. If it's some residential noise, you know, I'm the person you come to. And as commissioners and being kind of local representatives for your own neighborhood, you'll probably get a few people that'll be like, hey, who do I talk to about this? This is annoying, blah, blah, blah. I'm the guy. That being said, my time is up. I'm going to kick it over to our admin Tara. She's the one that keeps us all in line and keeps us all on track. Thank you.
Thanks Joe.
Hi all. Welcome. My name is Tara Hatcher. I am the administrative assistant for community development department. As Jill mentioned, I kind of support everybody and I try to keep everybody in line. So yeah, I do everything I can to help Jill. I support the planners with noticing anything that they need. I help the plant, the building department. I schedule all the building inspections, taking payments. Now that everything with COVID has happened, everything is transitioned to electronic. So we've been doing everything electronically. Pre-COVID, I do sit at the front counter. So when you do come into city hall, I will most likely greet you. So I look forward to seeing you once we reopen. I hope everyone receive their baskets. I, we, Joe and I dropped off a little gift baskets to everybody. Everything is from local businesses. So I hope you guys can all enjoy that. I look forward to working with you guys in this new year. And with that, I will turn it over to Jill.
Thank you Tara.
Yeah. All right. So we're at the end of our part one here. Thank you Tara. And literally Tara really is the face of city hall. She's, while city hall is still closed, she's there almost every day still. And we really appreciate how she's been holding down the fort. And I'd like to thank the rest of our staff. We hope that this high-level presentation was useful to the commission for connecting the commission's work with what is going on at city hall as well as around town. We do understand that the commission digs into all of this at a much deeper level for each ordinance and project that you work on. With that, we would of course be happy to field questions or hear later in part three at the end of our evening tonight about things that you'd like to learn more about. But now's the time for us to turn it back over to the chair to give you an opportunity to check and see if there's any public comment, but of course to encourage your commissioners to ask questions or have a discussion. And then this probably is a good time after that for a break because section two is really the meat and potatoes of this retreat. And winter will be presenting to you on some pretty, pretty serious matters. And we want to make sure everybody's comfortable and ready to go at that point. But we'll turn it over back to you now, Chair Reddick. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone from city hall who, who is here tonight. I, I want to say just briefly that as a 32-year resident of Hefman Bay and oftentimes observer of city hall, I'm tremendously impressed with the staff that we have working on behalf of Hefman Bay residents today. It's certainly a high watermark in the history of the, of the city. If we have any attendees, Bridget, I'd be happy to open a public hearing.
We do, but I don't see anyone raising their hand to speak. So I have no public comment at this time.
Okay. Well, in the absence of that, are there any commissioners who would like to ask questions or comment on the, the, the brief intros we've had from, from the staff members? Commissioner Gorn?
Just a quick question, not a planning commission question, but I wondered how much grant money was, did you guys get for the parklets?
I'm happy, yeah. I'm happy to answer that.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, so it was kind of a collaborative through, you know, downtown businesses. And I also, our engineering staff kind of worked on that too. I believe that we got up to 60,000 for these parklets. But a lot of what the money kind of went into is to be able to provide for some of these small businesses to have K rails or water barricades or some things that would provide some sort of safety. So like, one of the first things that we had already done was to get K rails and water barricades so that we can, you know, provide them out to the businesses that do apply for this parklet. And so, you know, that, that's kind of the start of it. As of the rest of it, we're still kind of working that out of how all that money's going to be spent.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks Joe. Any other commissioners have questions for staff?
I have one. So I, thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you to the, the staff for that, the overview. I really appreciated that. And, and also I wanted to, I guess I wanted to, it was kind of more of a thought, but I really appreciated Doug, your thoughts about kind of in thinking, in reviewing the SEQA mitigation measures. Like if that was a really helpful kind of guidelines for us as planning commissioners. And one thing I wanted to also, I'm just going to kind of put out there is that I think it would be helpful for us also to think about some of the pitfalls or trade-offs that when we're thinking about SEQA review and mitigation measures that apply to maybe different types of projects. Because we don't just see development in the sense of like, so there's a lot of things that fall under the development umbrella that we are asked to review. And so some of them are things like, we've seen projects that were more along the lines of restoration or that are kind of, it's a continuum, but there are ones that are more towards the restoration side. And maybe some of the, the pitfalls or things that we should be considering, there might be additional things, I think, when it comes to that. And my hope is that as a planning commission, we will be seeing more and more restoration-type projects because actually that's one of the key things we need to be doing a lot more of faster, you know, really to be more resilient and help our, you know. And so a lot of those types of projects I would hope we're seeing more of, but I think that there may be some additional kind of thought, you know, considerations when we're, when we're reviewing and thinking about the trade-offs and benefits of different mitigation measures in the context of restoration projects. I'm not talking about some of the more like other types of development that we might've been thinking of. So I just wanted to bring that up. It came up during the planning, excuse me, during the local coastal program discussions and such. And so I think this is kind of where it comes into like putting it into practice in part. So it was just a couple of thoughts.
Very good. Thank you Vice Chair Polgar. Yeah. Doug, I think you'd, you'd find a pretty active audience for more SEQA education as we go forward this year, if you have any spare time for such a thing. Any other commissioner questions for staff at this point?
Commissioner Benjamin has his hand raised.
Yeah, you know, I'm a, I'm a little hampered because I can't see all the commissioners.
Yeah, the shared screen. Can I, I can, I can help you out a little bit. So Commissioner Benjamin and then Commissioner Hernandez.
Okay, Commissioner Benjamin, please.
Thank you. I also enjoyed the, the presentation. This is the first one I've seen that gave that kind of overview. I wish that that had been available during my first term on a planning commission. So nice, nice work. And I'm sure the rest of it's going to be great. I think I just want to draw a line under the thresholds of significance point also to sort of piggyback on Vice Chair Polgar's notice of the SEQA-related issues. One of the areas that I hope finds its way into our work plan during the coming year is an opportunity to identify some of those thresholds of significance with respect to SEQA and dovetail them with standards of review that conform to our local coastal program. So I have learned, thanks to Commissioner Polgar and others, that it's important to make, to draw powerful distinctions between these, but they are complementary. And I think it's, it's one of the areas that can simplify and provide a bit more objectivity if we move beyond where we are today. So just one suggestion. Otherwise, no, no comments. I enjoyed the presentations.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Well, you know, I, I have neither a PhD nor a planning degree. So I'm kind of the big dummy here on, on this commission. And so I love the education that we get. And sometimes I think it's helpful for the public to get little tidbits, especially if it's not directly in the context of a project right before us. If it's possible to have maybe examples, like a short brief of, hey, here's some things about SEQA that we observed. Here are some things that maybe our, our legal team has observed. And not necessarily making a judgment on something, but just giving indication of like, this is how other communities view it. This is considered a best practice, whatever it is. I mean, anything we can do, especially if it uses specific examples that we can point to out in the wild. I think it helps not only us as a planning commission, but I also think it helps city, city staff, but also the public at large to understand the kind of problems we're grappling with. And, you know, I would certainly appreciate it. I know it's an investment to collect those kinds of things, but you know, if there's time and effort and if you're doing research for another project, you know, if you want to lay some of these things on us, I think there's an appetite for learning amongst my colleagues and certainly for myself.
Yeah, thank you for that. I would echo that. Any other commissioner comments or questions for staff? Well, seeing none, I, I lean towards following Jill's advice that we take a brief break at this point before diving into the next section of the retreat. Shall we, shall we come back at, at seven, what time is it? Shall we come back at two minutes after eight? 10-minute break?
Chair Reddick, just a note, thank you for that. I, I think that's great for staff. I do want to mention that a couple of staff members are going to cut out now. So we just want to thank Ferris and Joe. Tara's going to hang along as long as she can tonight. But we really appreciate our, our pals for coming in and presenting to you and getting to know you a little bit better. So I will see you be ready for the next section after your, your break.
We appreciate Ferris and Joe making that effort. I, I used to see Joe in and around city hall, but it, it seems like an awfully long time since, since we were face to face. Good to see you both.
You as well. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Uh, part two of the presentation. And I am just going to note that, um, Winter King is, is here now to cover this entire section. She's going to present on the Brown Act, Conflicts of Interest and Public Records. And we really appreciate Winter being here tonight to, to do these really important topics with you. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm happy to be with you tonight as always. I've been sitting with you all for a couple of years now and it's always a pleasure. I, I do admit I have mixed feelings about no longer doing my drive down from the city down to Half Moon Bay and then back up to Oakland on a couple of Tuesday nights. I obviously enjoyed the in-person, but a girl could get used to some Zoom meetings too. So, uh, but I'm happy to be here tonight. And so as Jill pointed out or mentioned, part two, we're going to jump into some state laws that are relevant to your actions as a planning commission. So we're going to talk about the Brown Act, Conflicts of Interest and the Public Records Act. And these are, you know, pretty weighty topics as Jill mentioned. And, uh, and so I'm going to cover them at a pretty high level. My hope is that by doing that, some of these issues will just be fresh in all of our minds as we head into a new year of planning commission duties. And I also just want to invite you all, you know, as we move forward with planning commission meetings, if you have any questions about compliance with these laws or issues that are coming up, feel free to reach out to me. You can also reach out to Jill. She can put you in touch with me as well and I'm happy to think things through with you. So, um, with that, uh, great, thanks, Brittany. Um, so we're going to start with the Brown Act, which is in the California Government Code and was enacted in the nineteen fifty's. So this one has been around for a while. Um, and this is our state's open government meeting law, sometimes called like a sunshine law. Next slide, please. And so the general idea behind the Brown Act, kind of the fundamental premise is that public agencies exist to carry out the people's business and the people have to have a right to be informed about what the agencies are doing on their behalf. Um, so to that end, the Brown Act requires local agency decision-making to be open and transparent and we'll get into some more of the specifics about how that works in a minute. Um, but really it comes down to requiring meetings where decisions are being made to be done in public and with adequate notice and opportunity for the public to be involved. Now, I'm going to go through some of the requirements and as we do this, some of you might say, well, that's not how we've been doing things for the last ten months. And that's because back in March of twenty twenty, Governor Newsom enacted a series of executive orders that essentially suspended or modified some of the Brown Act requirements due to the shelter-in-place orders and the COVID- nineteen pandemic. So we also have a slide in here to talk about that as well. Next slide, please. Okay, the two main concepts in the Brown Act are that, um, public agency meetings must take place in public unless there is an exception and that the public must be given proper notice of all meetings. Next slide. Now, we'll, we'll talk about the requirements for meetings in a minute, but I just wanted to start with the concept of what is a meeting under the Brown Act? Um, a meeting is any gathering of a majority of commissioners to hear, discuss, deliberate or take action on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Um, now, um, so I want to start with some examples. We have another slide about some complicating factors, but just, you know, obviously what we're doing right now is a meeting. There's a majority of commissioners here to hear, discuss, deliberate. We're not, uh, well, I guess there was action taken earlier in the meeting. But meetings can pop up in a variety of places. So for example, um, at least in pre-COVID times when coffee shops were open, let's say that three of you commissioners bump into each other at the coffee shop and the conversation just so happens to turn to, you know, the latest in the LUP process or what's going to happen with that development over on the corner. That constitutes a meeting. It is a gathering of a majority of commissioners and you talked about an item that's within the subject matter of the commission. Uh, next slide, please. Also, um, meetings can occur even if you're not all in the same place together. And this is when maybe one of you talks to, let's say, Vice Chair Polgar talks to Commissioner Hernandez over the fence between your yards about something that was coming, is coming up on an agenda. And then Commissioner Hernandez bumps into Chair Ruddock down the street and says, hey, I was talking to Sarah and she said, you know, she's really interested in imposing this condition on this project and I've been thinking the same way. What do you think about it? Well, through this kind of serial conversation, uh, you have just conducted a meeting. Similarly, that's the, the daisy chain sequence. There's also a variation called hub and spoke, which might go something like this. I'll use myself as an example. Um, let's say I call, um, uh, Commissioner Benjamin because he had a question about something on the upcoming agenda and I get his input and concerns about it. And then I happened to get a call from two other commissioners and in talking to them, I pretty much convey, you know, what Commissioner Benjamin's concerns were or questions were or inclinations were on the matter. Then I have been the hub in the hub and spoke sequence and have conducted basically a serial meeting by talking to a majority of commissioners and passing along the feedback of other commissioners. Um, so.
Excuse me, through the, I ask a question?
Uh huh, or that's fine with me, sorry.
Uh, thank you. So in that situation, it seems like I would have effectively had a conversation with each of those two commissioners. If neither of them had had a conversation with the third commissioner, there wouldn't have been a violation, but a meeting would have occurred. That's the thrust of this point or was there actually?
Well, anytime three of you, well, we can get to the, I, I'm kind of holding off on the requirements of the meeting, but yes, as long as there hasn't been adequate notice and opportunity for a public to participate in that, it would be a violation.
Thank you.
Um, so just to be clear on this though, individual briefings are okay. Um, so if you get a briefing by staff or have a conversation with me, those do not, um, create a meeting that's subject to the Brown Act as long as what we're doing is not developing kind of a collective conclusion or concurrence about something that's coming before the, um, the commission. Okay, electronic communications. Now this, um, this one, obviously the Brown Act was enacted in the nineteen fifty's when email communications and social media were not out there. Um, but this has created some opportunities for perhaps unintentional Brown Act violations now that we have this. So, um, so you can create a meeting through email correspondence. So for example, um, if, uh, Director Ikas sends an email out to all the commissioners with a memo updating you on some comments that came in and, uh, Chair Ruddock hits reply all and says, well, you know, um, I'm, I'm definitely, you know, not in favor of, of this project, um, given all these comments from the public. And obviously these are all hypothetical examples. I'm just using it to illustrate the points here. By hitting reply all and engaging in that kind of conversation, and let's say especially if another commissioner then replies all as well, you can see how that can create a meeting. It's a conversation, albeit an electronic one, um, among a majority of commissioners about an issue that's within the planning commission's jurisdiction. So general advice is avoid reply all. And, you know, this, I feel like this comes up sometimes, not in terms of a Brown Act violation, but there will sometimes be occasion where a planning commissioner will have found an interesting article or, um, have attended a conference and want to share information with the rest of the commission. Um, and that is fine. You can share information, but it does create, you know, the potential for an accidental reply all that starts a conversation outside of the public forum. So in that circumstance, one way of handling it is either to just provide the written material to staff who can post it online for everyone to be able to access or of course just everyone be careful about, uh, using that reply all. Um, social media, there was recent legislation that attempted to clarify what the Brown Act means in the context of social media platforms. And basically, um, said that it is okay for members of, uh, an agency body like the planning commission to engage in conversations or communications on a social media platform when you're answering questions or provide, providing information to the public or soliciting information from the public. But what you can't do is have a majority of the members of the body basically engaging in a conversation on that platform. And that includes even if, let's say Commissioner Hernandez posts something about a, uh, a project or a policy or an event coming up that's within the planning commission's jurisdiction. And then Commissioner Benjamin and Vice Chair Polgar both give it the thumbs up or a heart or whatever the, the emoji response is on that particular platform. So that's, that's kind of a new format to look out for and just be aware of so that you don't accidentally create a, a meeting through your participation and, and others' social media. Okay, thanks. So there are some meetings that are not subject to the Brown Act. Um, and this includes individual contacts with individuals. So sometimes we'll hear, you know, obviously you're out in your communities, you're talking to your neighbors and friends and, and folks. And if, you know, obviously it's just one commissioner talking with individuals, that's, that's not a meeting. Um, also if, um, even if all of you wanted to attend together a public conference, um, that would not be a meeting that's subject to the Brown Act. We do tend to just, you know, when this is going to happen, if there's a majority of you who are going to attend some educational conference or other meeting that's open to the public, but not, for example, led by another agency, we do just like to remind you that, um, you're not to be talking about or making decisions on, uh, matters of city business. So you don't have to avoid each other at these interactions once we get to go back to in-person conferences and events. But it is just something to be mindful of when you are in a group together in that setting. Um, and, um, the others, I'm not going to go into these in too much detail. If you're attending a meeting that's being held by another legislative body so that it is already noticed under the Brown Act, that's, you, you don't have to renotice it as a planning commission meeting. It's already been noticed. And then, um, standing committees are, are committees that are established to, uh, deal with particular issues going forward. And then social or ceremonial events are sort of like what the city manager was touting at the beginning of this meeting, the, the open house. Well, actually I wasn't sure if that was actually going to be another sort of noticed public meeting or not, but assuming it was more social or ceremonial, uh, like with the public con- conferences, it doesn't become a Brown Act meeting just because three or more of you are there.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna, through the chair, if I may, I was just gonna clarify that last point. So I throw a Super Bowl party. I invite my friends and neighbors to my house and amongst that group or several planning commissioners is just because it's a social event and we're all watching a football game, watching Tampa Bay get destroyed by Kansas City. The, that doesn't constitute a meeting as long as we don't talk about anything before the commission or talk about any city business there. Uh, one of the things that often happens, because I have an next-door neighbor who's a planning commissioner, is we will have people ask us our opinions on things. And if the two of us are present, like, again, it doesn't constitute a meeting if two of us are there, but if a third friend comes over and people start asking us these types of questions, like, um, you know, we just have to avoid those situations. I, I just, just wanted to affirm, you know, my understanding of those three scenarios.
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Hernandez. And it also raises a good point just about public perception as well. So, um, you know, that's even, the, the Brown Act is really, it's a floor, not a ceiling in terms of openness of public meetings and conduct. So, um, I think you're right to be cautious not to engage in those conversations, especially, you know, if you have that third commissioner there. But there's also just the perception of what's going on. And since the purpose of the Brown Act is to really make it clear that public business is handled in a public forum, not in, at somebody's super, Super Bowl party, even if it's not a Brown Act violation, it's good to just be mindful of the public perception. And, you know, to the extent you can make it clear that what's happening there is not that you're doing some, you know, backroom deal on planning commission action.
Yeah, it, it's not just the, the, the act of doing something, it's the perception that you're doing something that we're trying to avoid so that we don't erode the public faith in what we're doing.
Yeah, good point.
Thank you.
Um, and then I'm not going to go into closed sessions, um, mostly because it's, at least, I don't think we've had one in the two years I've been with the planning commission. It's more common. They come up more frequently with the legislative body, the city council. But obviously there are certain pretty limited categories of topics of conversation and noticing requirements for having a, a closed session as well.
topics of conversation and noticing requirements for having a closed session as well. Okay, so moving on to the actual meeting requirements. This is focused, at least initially here on the notice. And you all are likely pretty familiar with these timelines at this point. But for a regular meeting, an agenda must be posted 72 hours beforehand. And the agenda is really important because, as we'll get into, I guess, in the next bullet point. The commission is not allowed to take action on or discuss items that are not on the agenda. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. But the agenda is posted 72 hours in advance. And then for special meetings, you only need to post them 24 hours in advance. And the agenda has a brief description of each of the items of business so that obviously, the public is aware of what's going to be discussed. And you can see just from a public inclusion and information perspective, that's really important because if the description isn't adequate, and then the public doesn't know that actually they were really interested in that topic. They would, you know, not know to show up and express their opinion. So the agenda is is super important. So some exceptions to this rule that you can't talk about items that are not on the agenda. Obviously, we always have a public comment and we're required to have a public comment period for non-agenda items. And we, on our agendas, we do that towards the beginning of the meeting and let the public speak on anything that's within the purview of the Planning Commission, but is not on the agenda for that night. And so that's obviously okay, as is a brief response. But, you know, we tend to be pretty careful about this. We don't have a lot of back and forth in that opening public comment period. Because, you know, you, you don't want to kind of tip over into having a conversation about something that's not on the agenda as opposed to, thank you for your comment, you know, staff, can we put this on an agenda for another meeting? Could we get more information about it? Responses like that. Which is the next bullet point, request for information or a report back. This one, in my experience, can come up pretty frequently at the end of our meetings when we have Commissioner comments and the director's report. And so sometimes, you know, that on the agenda, it doesn't say anything about what's going to be said because we don't know at that point, it's more of an opportunity for commissioners to raise issues that they want to have on a future agenda, report back on activities that they've undertaken. For example, if they attended a conference or sat on a in on a committee meeting, something like that. So, you know, we have a couple of standing agenda items toward the end of our agenda where this exception frequently comes into play. And occasionally, you know, either staff or I might raise our hand in Zoom land or jump in and curb some discussion there just to make sure we're not running afoul of this rule about sticking to agenda items. So the last bullet point is just that advice, avoid prolonged discussions on these topics. Really, it's just a time to say, hey, this, this has come up, someone asked me to raise this. Could we have a study session on that in the future? And other requirements. And this you'll see. These are requirements when we are not subject to the executive orders and the shelter in place rules. Some of these are, some of these are still requirements today. Written materials must be made available to the public. Usually, you know, there, there will be a packet that goes out with the agenda that might get supplemented in the, you know, 72 hours leading up to the meeting. If there are additional comments that come in or questions from commissioners for additional information. The public must be permitted to freely attend and observe. And, you know, obviously, when we were back in person, this was a physical attendance and observation. And the public must be permitted to address the meeting via spoken or written comments. We can, the chair can impose reasonable limits for order and to avoid disruptions. So I don't know if you all took a look at your bylaws or just through experience at the Planning Commission. The chair generally imposes a three minute time limit on public comments, just to make sure that we can get through all of the public comments on a particular item. And then minutes must be recorded.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Benjamin, go ahead.
I'm not the chair anymore, but thank you. So just on that last slide, where the public has to be permitted to attend. I get it totally in support of that. But in the Zoom world, we're subject to the vagaries of IT. So let's, you know, hopefully, this won't happen, but just suppose that the storm we're having tonight knocks out transmission. Have we, have we lost our ability to have a meeting?
Good question. And actually, our next slide is on Brown Act in the COVID era. But it reminds me that this statute requires that we substantially comply with these requirements. So it acknowledges that things are going to happen. We might not be able to do everything perfectly. There might be a typo in the agenda. And so the act, by having this substantial compliance standard of review, it really attempts to balance public access and openness and transparency with some form of efficient governance. So you don't have to just keep redoing things in order to get perfection. So I think if the, you know, if the power went out, obviously, we would have trouble continuing with the meeting because we wouldn't be able to continue to to talk necessarily. But I think that substantial compliance threshold would come into play there as well. And we'd probably have to make some judgment calls about whether to go forward or adjourn and pick things up later.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so this is the modifications that Governor Newsom allowed to the Brown Act and acknowledgement that, you know, we weren't, it wasn't in the public interest, public health interest to be meeting in person during the pandemic. And so this specifically suspends the portions of the Brown Act that govern the sort of in-person accessibility. And and it does it in a couple of ways. One is it says that, you know, agencies don't have to have a physical access point when holding these remote meeting locations. You don't have to post the agenda at the remote location, wherever that may be. And I think, you know, if we remember back to before the pandemic times, you know, the the underlying Brown Act rule is that generally, a majority of the body needs to be physically located in the jurisdiction, the body's jurisdiction. And if there's someone who's going to be teleconferenced in, there are these very particular rules about providing notice of where that teleconferencing person is going to be and making sure that that actual location is noticed, posted with a notice and open to the public to attend in that teleconference location. Those requirements have been suspended by these executive orders. And now, obviously, we are allowed to conduct these meetings via Zoom. And, you know, I think we all had trepidation and concern at the beginning of doing all of these remote meetings about the impact on public participation. But, you know, I mean, I think it probably depends where you are and who your participants are. But we certainly saw a lot of public participation through this remote access, perhaps in part because it it took away any hurdles or obstacles in physically getting to a meeting location. So I will be curious if and when we emerge out of the COVID shelter in place orders, whether there is any legislative action to kind of merge some of the remote meeting rules that we've all come to experience over the last year with the underlying Brown Act requirements in order to foster even more participation. So we'll see. So even in, under this executive order, the public has to be allowed to observe and address the meeting telephonically or via electronic means. And the agency has to advertise the procedures and must quickly advertise any changes. So this is, we have, you know, a good paragraph on this and all of the notices and agendas that get posted for the Planning Commission. Oh, and actually, before I move on to this one, one other piece that I've seen in, under the, in the underlying Brown Act requirements. If you have someone teleconferencing in, there was already this requirement that that the body take a roll call vote instead of just a voice call vote for actions there. And here, the executive orders don't really deal with that particular issue. But we've been pretty diligent at doing the the roll call votes throughout. And I think it's good to be mindful that not everyone is actually on Zoom. Some people are participating by telephone. So they can't see if we all raise our hands. Well, I don't raise my hand because I don't vote, but if you all raise your hands. So that's why, you know, the sort of best practice is to continue with the roll call, even if it seems somewhat cumbersome. You know, I think we have done the hand raising for very minor procedural things like, let's extend the meeting till 10:30 or let's, you know, take a break for five minutes. But just a reminder that there's a reason for the roll call vote in these circumstances. And so it's, it's good practice to continue with that. Okay, consequences for Brown Act violations. So the main three are, actually, it's the main two are, there are sometimes civil suits to invalidate actions that were taken in violation of the Brown Act. And the financial consequence for the city is that if somebody brings one of these actions successfully, the city could be liable to pay their attorney's fees. There is also, you know, on the books, possibility of a misdemeanor conviction for individual actors for violations of the Brown Act. But this requires a really overt act and intended violation. So I believe there hasn't ever been a criminal conviction of any public servant for a violation of the Brown Act. Okay, so we're moving on to conflicts of interest. And there are basically two topics here that I'm going to cover. This is a very complicated area of law. So again, I'm going to just remind everyone of what you should be thinking of and aware of heading into this new year of actions. We're going to briefly cover the Political Reform Act as well as some common law principles of conflicts of interest. And just so you know, you know, staff is always looking out for potential issues here. And so we're, we're here to help you. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. But we're also trying to identify any potential issues that might come up and may reach out to you if we see something on the horizon that you might want to be aware of. So the Political Reform Act is a fundamental conflict of interest statute in the state. And it basically says that public officials may not make, participate in making, or in any way use or attempt to use their official position to influence a government decision in which they know or have reason to know that they have a disqualifying conflict of interest. So for this particular statute and conflict of interest law, what you're really focusing on is financial conflicts of interest. When we get to the common law provisions, it's broader than that. But this is focusing on the financial. So there's a four step analysis that you have to undertake under the Political Reform Act to determine if you do or don't have a conflict of interest. And I'll just take a step back and say, in the context of the Planning Commission, the way that this most often comes up is if the Planning Commission is approving or is considering a project or a plan or a policy that could have an effect, either a beneficial or a negative effect on real property that's owned by a commissioner. And we'll talk about that particular situation a little bit, but it is good to know. This isn't just a situation where, oh, I have to recuse if this project could negatively impact me. You commissioners also could have to recuse if a project is coming before the commission that could positively, you know, benefit a financial interest or a real estate interest of theirs. And these, you know, because there's this four step analysis, really, anytime you've sort of, some bell goes off that this, you know, might impact a financial interest that you have or real property, feel free to reach out. There are lots of opinion letters from the Fair Political Practices Commission, the FPPC. And if you have any questions, not only can we help you with it, but that state commission provides an advice hotline as well as advice letters. Again, if you have any questions. But the four step analysis is first to determine if the the action that's before you is, there's a reasonably foreseeable financial effect. So, you know, is it reasonably foreseeable that this project could either benefit or negatively impact your property? For example, if there is a reasonably foreseeable financial effect, then you move on to step two, which is, is it material? So if it's just like really de minimis, then you may conclude that there's no disqualifying conflict of interest. But if you think, well, it could be material, I mean, maybe this will, you know, maybe, I don't know, putting in, I'm trying to think of a good example here. Well, I'll take an extreme example of, let's say, the the Planning Commission was providing a recommendation on whether to create a new waste disposal facility across the street from your house. That seems pretty material, could impact your property values. So you move on to step three, which is whether your interest is distinguishable. The effect on your property or other interests is distinguishable from the effect on the public generally. And for that, there's a handy rule of thumb that an action that will affect 25% of the community in the same way is sort of the the public generally. So that's step three. And then step four is whether by participating in the action, you'd be using your official position to influence the decision. So, you know, whenever this comes you know, whenever this comes up again, I would just say, reach out to us, reach out to Joe. You may want to reach out to the FPPC. And I should say that this these conflicts of interest are actually personal issues to you. My job in the city attorney's office is to represent the city. You have a personal obligation to make sure that you don't have a disqualifying financial interest. So I can help you to the extent I can. But again, you know, it's really each individual commissioner's responsibility. Oh, the words seem to have disappeared from my three bubbles there, but so this is a rather abstract.
Brittany, go ahead and click it Scott. We thought you wanted it animated. There you are.
Oh, great. Sorry. No, you were just too high tech for me. Okay, so there are some recent changes to the regulations implementing the Political Reform Act that specifically address impacts to real property. And basically say, look, if you are considering a, a project that it's reasonably foreseeable, there will be a material impact on your property. And if it's within 500 feet of your property, there's a presumption that you have a conflict of interest. And the, the key inquiry there is whether there's clear and convincing evidence that the decision will not have any measurable impact on the official's property. So you know, if you're, if the commission is considering a project within 100, or sorry, within 500 feet of your property, there's the presumption that there's a conflict and you're going to need to take a hard look in the general. In most cases, a commissioner would recuse from taking part in the discussion or the decision making with respect to those actions. At the other end of the spectrum, if there's a project that's beyond 1,000 feet from your real estate, then there's a presumption of no conflict. So someone else would have to show that there's an evidence of an impact. But there's a presumption that there's no conflict. So in, by and large, a commissioner would not likely feel the need to recuse for decisions that affect property outside of that 1,000 foot boundary. In the middle, between 500 and 1,000, this is what we've come to call the donut. There's no presumption one way or another. And so you really need to do the the four step analysis that I already went through and relevant factors could include whether there could be a change to the property's character by substantially altering traffic levels, intensity of use, parking, views, privacy, noise levels, or air quality. I am so query how helpful this new kind of donut approach is. But those are, those are the considerations and yeah, we have keep maps of the 500 and 1,000 foot circles around your, any real estate or your home, whether it's a you lease or own. So we have those maps and can provide them to you. And to help with any decision making, but staff does keep that in mind as projects come before the commission. Okay, common law conflicts. And there are kind of two types. One is a very general common law conflict that can occur when there's even really just an appearance of impropriety. So this first body of law is premised on the basic presumption that a public officer is bound to exercise powers conferred on him or her with disinterested zeal, disinterested skill, zeal and diligence, and primarily for the benefit of the public. And so for this, you know, this is a pretty this is not a bright line rule kind of body of law. And, but it's good to just keep in mind this fundamental principle. And, you know, one colleague refers to how to approach these issues as think about it as, you know, what, what would this look like if this activity were on the front page of the paper, if your interest was known or your activities were known. So it's a pretty broad but not bright line rule of conflict of interest, just to keep in mind. And the second category here, due process is more specific and it really particularly arises in the context of the Planning Commission's role in considering permit applications. So when you are acting in what we call your quasi judicial role, where you have a project that's come before you and you're you have a body of facts about the project, what its impacts will be, what it will look like, what its size is, and you are being asked to apply existing city law to the application and determine whether or not to issue a permit. So in that context, not only do you generally have to be acting in the primarily for the benefit of the public, but the applicant has the right to a fair and unbiased decision maker under the due process clause. And so a commissioner could be disqualified from participating if there's evidence that he or she is biased either in favor of or against the party that's involved. And so this really comes up in the context of there's a project that's going to come before you. It's falls under the due process clause because it's one of these quasi judicial actions that the commission's going to undertake. And let's say there's a commissioner who comes out on their blog or Facebook page and says, no matter what this applicant tells me, I'm voting no. There's no way I will vote to issue the permit for this project. Well, that applicant would have pretty good evidence that that particular commissioner didn't have an open mind, wasn't willing to listen to evidence and apply the law to the facts in a fair and unbiased way.
Commissioner Benjamin has his hand up. Winter, if you don't mind a question.
Thank you. That was, I was just focusing on that due process question and a flag went off when you said that if it was a bias either for or against the project. If it was against the project, it's clear that the applicant's due process rights could be a risk. If the bias, the possible perception of bias was for the project, the only bias, the only due process violation I can foresee is some due process associated with the opposition. Do they enjoy the same privilege of due process that the applicant does?
Good question. Not the same, but there are cases talking about in particular property owners near a project site having an actual due process interest in the application of the law to the facts for a particular application. But you're right, it is somewhat different in, in, in quality.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up on that. So when we have when we have a project before us, it's, it's important that we're even handed and we apply due process to not only the applicant, but you know, the, the interested public who may have a direct stake in the outcome of the project.
Yes, I think that's always advisable. It's always advisable to keep an open mind. Be interested in the public comment, the comment from the applicant, the evidence that's presented. And for these quasi judicial actions, like as Doug was explaining with a Sequo record, there's also an administrative record of proceedings that gets created as the project comes through the process. And so, you know, kind of the fundamental idea is you, your job in that context, and I will say this is different than when you're considering policies, generally applicable policies that you might want the city to adopt. And the Planning Commission in general, like with the land use plan, was recommending approval to the city council. But in that context, you were acting in a quasi legislative capacity where the courts have found due process doesn't come into it really. Obviously, people are appointed to bodies, elected to bodies because they have opinions about what generally applicable policy should be. So I just want to make a clear distinction here that the due process really comes up in the context of applications for particular permits or projects and that the, you as a commissioner do have more flexibility with legislative actions to there's not the same concern that you're, you're biased in favor or against some policy because that is your job to debate the pros and cons of that. But with individual projects, yes, keep an open mind. Hear all the evidence that comes in as part of the record and just, you know, deal with the applicant and the community fairly, which in my two years with you, you always do. So I would just say, keep up the good work on that front.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have one follow up question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hernandez.
On the appearance of impropriety, the impact is on the the quasi judicial role that we take and it would impact the the findings of a particular project. Does that appearance of impropriety have a common law impact to me as a planning commissioner? Not the active impropriety, but if there's an appearance of impropriety, is there some kind of personal liability that I'm open to as a result of that via common law? Or does it just pertain to the the findings that we make in our quasi judicial?
Yeah, no, that's really just in terms of the outcome, the sort of agency outcome. And I will say this, the, the first category, the cases seem to be really like the facts are to any reader would be outrageous. I'm trying to think of an example. It was like someone was on a board and they were considering whether or not to approve a contract that would benefit their adult son with whom they lived, but the adult son was completely financially independent. And the court was just like, that's like, like, there's no way that is an arms length sort of interactions. So even though it doesn't fall neatly into our statutory categories for conflicts of interest, they concluded that there was a conflict of interest problem there. But yes, the, the consequences include, you know, invalidating the action. And of course, an applicant can also sue to, to remedy a due process violation if they, if the appropriate processes and aren't followed by the agency. So you're welcome. Okay, so last topic, and thanks for hanging in there with me. And, and I'll, I'll do this one. I just have a few points I want to make about the California Public Records Act. This is sort of like the equivalent of the Brown Act, but in the context of public records. And that can include public documents, emails, recordings, basically any kind of physical, well, I guess I can't even say physical now in the electronic realm, but written or recorded document that was created by or in the possession of a public agency is generally subject to the Public Records Act. And what that, the overarching rule is that the Records Act requires the city to allow public inspection of these documents that are owned, used, generated, or retained by the city unless a specific exception applies. So on my slide, it says limited exceptions. There are apparently 76 different exceptions to the Public Records Act. But the courts have been very clear that the purpose of the rule is to open up public records to the public, sort of in keeping with what I talked about at the beginning with the Brown Act, that really, you know, public agencies are working for the public, not the other way around. And so unless there's really an overarching concern about making a document public, the public should have access to it. And those concerns, which are what are behind the exceptions, sometimes it's about privacy. So, you know, there are like certain personnel records are not open to the public. Sometimes they're about sort of public health and safety. And then there's also sort of a category of exceptions that relate to efficient governance. So, you know, agencies don't always have to disclose, you know, there are exceptions for litigation documents, settlement communications, real, certain real estate negotiations, things like that, where disclosing the records would either put the public at a severe or the public agency at a severe disadvantage in trying to work for their constituents or have other sort of adverse public impacts. So the main point I want to make here is you all as planning commissioners, create as well as review public records when you send emails. When you, what else would it be? Perhaps if you drafted some kind of, I guess, maybe former Chair Benjamin's letter that was sent to the city council about the land use plan and staff's work on that. And you can be creating public records, even if you do it on your private email account. So this is just me reminding you that when you email, when you write, just be mindful that those are public and to the extent that the city has possession of them, if there's a request for disclosure, the presumption is that they will be disclosed. And so it's always a good reminder that email is almost never guaranteed to be private and we should always be conscientious of that and and polite and respectful in our city business and correspondence. Great. I think that's, that's it. I'm happy to answer questions. I know that was a lot.
And thank you, Winter. Before going back to the chair and questions, staff just wants to note a couple, a couple items and yeah, that felt like New Year's resolutions and like cleaning all tied up together. That that was excellent and helpful to staff as well as the commission, I'm sure. We want to let the commission know that staff does try to incorporate in our standard practices, ways to protect the integrity of the commission's work. So for example, when we communicate with you through email, we're really diligent about this and we BCC all of you. And this is why, so that the, the dreaded reply all plague doesn't bite you on accident. We don't want to set you up to, to make one of those, those email meetings that, that you had no intention of ever, ever doing. So that's why, that's what that practice is. So if you're, you're wondering why new commissioner Goran, why we BCC you, it's, it's, that is, that is why we do that. Also, to we are getting your city email ready for you and we, you'll have that soon. And we encourage, again, all of the commissioners to use the city email for city business. And I think you'll thank yourself for parsing that apart. It's, it's a really good practice and I think it's, it's definitely recommended by us. And the third section is much, much shorter than the first two. So we wanted you to know that before. And the third section is much, much shorter than the first two. So we wanted you to know that before you dive into discussion or look for public comment.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to open it for public comment, but I'm, I'd be surprised if there are members of the public wanting to speak on this.
I'm saying none.
All right. Well, if the off chance somebody shows up, we can open public comment. But in the meantime, do commissioners have comments or questions for Winter?
So Freedom of Information Act requests can be pretty broad, even if you're using city email for your correspondence. Can a Freedom of Information Act include your personal email, even if you haven't been communicating on your personal email?
Only if the email, if you're not doing any city business on your personal email, then nothing would be a risk. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, this mic is very sensitive. If you haven't done any city business on your personal email, then no, they, they can't get, you know, your email to your daughter about Thanksgiving dinner or whatever. And so that's why I think Jill made the good reminder to really segregate it. You'll thank yourself because then if there is a Public Records Act request and you've only been doing public business on your city email, then you're not, no one's going to have to sort through to see if there's anything responsive in your private email.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Winter? Rick, it looks like you're speaking, but you're on mute.
Sorry, this has been outstanding, really helpful. I'd suggest maybe we edit this, cut this out and put it on the city website as a general guidelines for what, what we do and don't do. I found it to be, it reminded me of the many things I thought I already knew and corrected some mistakes that clearly were in my mind. So I think we could do something with this more generally. It's good, it's good medicine.
Commissioner Benjamin or Vice Chair Polgar, would you like to?
My questions were asked and answered. Thank you.
Sarah No. Winter, I had, I had a couple of small questions. The scenario where a member of the public during public comment clearly is asking and hoping for an answer from the commission or more commonly from staff, I've often felt it would be good if we had a crisp answer prepared for such a person, even if it's as simple as, you know, me memorizing the city, the main city hall phone number to give to them or something like that. I, sometimes the, I, I, I think clearly staff has every intention to follow up where it's appropriate, but to, the more we can make the next steps very clear for such a person, the better.
Yeah, I think that's good, something short and sweet. I, I think when Commissioner Benjamin was chair, he would frequently say, you know, we don't typically engage in this, but back and forth in public comment, but your comment is noted, staff is here, they're taking notes. But you could also have, you know, if you want further communication, here's the number, or here's the email. And it probably is good to have something concise and easy to remember to just recite so that, you know, you don't get lured into a long conversation about something that's not on the agenda.
Yes, short and sweet is best. I, I take it that you're not going to speak about our bylaws. Is that correct?
Oh, um, is that coming up in this part three, I think, right, Jill?
It's very, we're, we're just gonna fly over it tonight. We can dig into them in another session. We believed that we would be pretty saturated at this point.
Well, well, in that case, let me ask a somewhat related question. I noticed the, the bylaws say quite clearly that members of the public during public comment are not required to identify themselves. And we always work pretty hard, both at the EOC and on Zoom, to capture the speaker's name. So I'm curious what, what your feeling is about that.
Yeah, I think it's always good to, I mean, I think we can ask that folks identify and state the reason why. We like to have that information to make sure that the record is clear. If there's a response that's needed, we have contact information. But I think it's also really good to point out that they don't have to do it because that is the law. They don't have to provide their name and we can't make them do it. So I think it's probably good just to explain both of those things.
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying. We don't want to inhibit any, any people from commenting by, by such a thing. All right. Well, thank you for that. I, I don't think the commission has further questions. So Jill, I guess if you want to proceed with the next section, this is the time.
All right, we'll try to power right through here. Thank you, Brittany. So in this final section, we just want to wrap up tonight by bringing the discussion back to really the practice of the commission's work. Acknowledging the bylaws without digging into them tonight, Bridget's going to spend time talking to you about the magic of getting those agendas and packets out to you as well as the minutes. I will talk to you about a little bit of, about your typical meeting, item review process, and then Brittany will conclude discussing some things that you should prepare yourselves for and will prepare you to for your work plan. So, um, next slide, please. Um, so we, we're really glad to hear the chair refer to the bylaws. We encourage you all to dig into them. They're there to help. They are consistent with the Brown Act. They can guide really good meeting management and protect you from slipping into things that, that can be challenging, especially with some of the things we'll talk about a little bit later on. But we had a lot of material tonight, as I already said. Think about what you might want covered in a study session about your bylaws, or if you're perfectly fine reviewing them. And then if you have questions, just bring them up to staff. They're meant to be really accessible. They are approved by city council. They are a city document. So if there's questions or concerns about it, we can actually go back and review the bylaws and bring them back to council to make adjustments if, if needed. So that's a really important component about these.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. I just didn't understand the third bullet paging.
Same paging, getting everybody on the same page.
Thank you. Got it.
It was a little, a little too, yeah, okay.
I'm too literal. Thank you.
No, 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 no.
Long day.
A little too casual. All right. So with that, let's give Bridget her time to talk to you about agenda packets and minutes.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Congratulations on your new roles and welcome Commissioner Goran. My name's Bridget Jett. And I'm the planning analyst and support staff to the planning commission in regards to organizing the the agenda packet and assuring that the planning commissioners all have what they need in person and remotely for each meeting. This is currently going on my eighth year here at the city of Half Moon Bay, and I'm also a fourth generation cosider. So I will be giving you a review of the packet process this evening. So agenda packets, we create agenda packets and distribute them the week before a planning commission meeting. So this, the first and the third week of each month. They, we've staff forecasts and discuss what's ready to be reviewed by the planning commission ahead of time. The agendas are carefully managed. So we take into consideration, you know, public interest on the item, anticipate the time it will take for possible discussion. You know, we prioritize as maybe a smaller project, such as like a temporary permit, a tent permit versus a single family house that may take a little bit of time while we, while we still accommodate the applicant and the project in a timely manner. This process is also carried over during our director hearing, agenda placement, and also the AAC. Going on to minutes, we, staff takes copious notes during each of your, your meetings. And we also listen to the audio video after, after the meetings and take efficient meeting, meeting notes. Our goal is to consistently have planning commission minutes drafted by the next scheduled planning commission meeting. The director and I work very hard to accomplish this. We feel that having the minutes done in a quickly manner not only helps staff ourselves to stay on top of the task on hand, but also for the planning commission and our staff. The events are still fresh in our heads in, in the two-week period. So by the time it becomes to review and approval, we, we knew what happened just two weeks ago. Let's see, the Okay, so, oh, as far as minutes, sorry, I, I'm, it's late, I'm sorry. We also, for a minute, we assist, it also assists staff and the applicant to have clear direction going further forward in your, our process when it goes into further planning and building. Along with the agenda packet, approved sign minutes and the video of the meetings are posted on our website. So for archival retrieving for the public, for, for anyone who's interested. And next slide, we have agenda notification. This is so important that Scott and Winter have already covered most of this and a lot of the regulations of the agenda and notification earlier this evening. Here's what we do for each meeting. We post an agenda outside of city hall for each meeting. And we also post on the website. I also do an email notification that's sent out for each and every meeting. So as of today, just so you kind of have an idea of how much, or how many emails go out, planning commission, we send 644 emails for director hearing and admin action, 432. And architectural review, we currently have 113 active emails that are sent out. And we were doing, we're still continuing their plan HMB. When we send out those types of notices, we have 1,001 emails that go out. Public participation, we, well, back in the day, 10 months ago, we were at the EOC in person and we would have anyone from one to many people participate in person or, or write in their comments. And currently, since COVID, we have all of our public meetings and hearings on Zoom. So we open the public comment kind of sessions, just like we would in person and accommodate everyone via that or even email. So if emails come in during or prior to the meeting. We have, the director and I have been working together to make all these meetings very transparent and accessible as possible to everyone. And we are open to suggestions. But an example that we have put together is that administrative action doesn't, in the past have not, in our code, do not require an actual meeting. It's a staff approval on a certain date and a certain time. And we, we noticed that. And since COVID and being remote, we are treating administrative actions like director hearings. We set up a meeting, we post, I send out the email to all the director hearing, people that are interested in director hearing, they get an admin administrative action notice. And it just, it gives them the opportunity to, to join, listen, comment, and just know that we're, we're not just approving something that no, nobody's, you know, seeing, I guess. So this is just another way to stay transparent in our department and, and just be available to our community. So with that, I will turn the next slide over to Jill, who will talk about kind of a typical agenda item layout and what it looks like during a meeting.
Thanks, Bridget. Hey, um, we just have a couple of slides to go. I just wanted a few last thoughts here about best practices. First of all, you're, you just heard about the diligent work that goes into getting a packet out. One of the things that we are going to work very hard on in 2021 is, is getting them to you earlier in the week so you have more time with it. It's, and it was, 2020 was rough for us with getting the land use plan done, the volume of work and the, the remote work style. But we would really like to deliver a packet to the commissioners so you have several more days. What that will provide, we hope, is that the, the number one thing that we really appreciate is if you're concerned about an item and you've had time to read it in advance, let us know. And we will spend time with you, we'll meet with you in whatever format we're in. And do know, we are very aware of the hub and spoke communication pitfall and won't do that. If you express concerns or absolute, you're flipping your lid, you like a project so much and you've told staff about it, we're not going to tell any of your planning commission colleagues. We will work with you individually and you do not need to worry about the integrity of the process in, in working with your staff. Now, um, that is before the, the hearing night. Let's pretend we're at a hearing and the slide at is, this is her very typical slide number two, that you would see any of the planners present to you of, oh, we're going to, we have an item, it's, we're gonna have a presentation. The commission will ask clarifying questions. We need a public forum or public hearing. And then it will go back to the, the commission for deliberation and possibly a decision. So we just want to, thinking about Winter's presentation and how she highlighted some of the, through all of those, those regulations and how important they are, she highlighted best practices for keeping an open mind and maintaining the process and providing for due process. And we just want to share one little scenario about navigating through this process that we've been using for quite some time. Happy to get feedback from you about it. But like Winter, she, she mentioned that we, we want to be a little more careful about the director report and the planning commissioner report items at the end of our meeting when those are not agendized. We also want to encourage you to really get back away from the gray area, and it's hard, but back away from the gray area of clarifying questions. Clarifying questions are meant to set the record straight. Do that casual thing I called earlier, same paging people. If there's something that you found in the record or in the presentation that was confusing and you just want to make sure that it is clarified for everyone or, or make a correction. We're not ready for the, it's, it's too soon for the commission to deliberate or express an opinion because you haven't had public forum yet, you haven't had your public hearing. And we think you're doing a great job. We just think this is a tricky area. And so I'm gonna try to borrow from Winter's approach of, of a kind of a severe example. On clarifying question, the commissioner asks, so are there solar panels on that roof? That's a great clarifying question. staffer is going to say, yep or no. And maybe even the page where you can find it in the plans or apologize for having not cited it in the staff report. Still a clarifying question, but perhaps a little bit loaded is, boy, there really should be solar panels on this. Where the heck are they? That, you know, I, none of you have ever done that, but I'm, I'm going, I'm going way too far to illustrate that this is an area where we're, we're hoping to just step away from the gray. And let's see how that goes. And I think you'll get to public hearing faster. And I think that's good for your public and we, we would encourage that. And then you will still have all the time you need for your deliberations. So again, on deliberation, I, I think Chair Riddick brought this up over a few days ago or maybe last week. or maybe last week, about commissioners making a motion in a second on items and having already kind of worked out all the issues. So by the time you're making that motion and second, staff is ready to just do the roll call because we assume that you're done. We're not, we shouldn't be assuming that. You can still deliberate. A motion and a second can call for the discussion. So we want to be clear that your deliberation can work all the way through that entire process, and Winter's here to guide it if we go a little bit sideways on it. But then the final thing that would really be the one that I want to help with, and it's been hard in the Zoom format, we were, I think, when we're in person, there's body language and we can wave, and we get a little bit more rapport than we've been able to here. But it's when you're at your motion, and if there's anything about it that's going to be different than what is in the staff recommendation from your staff report, or because we often give you memos with updates as information comes in and we try to adjust as we go, if there's anything different than what's in the written record or was presented in the presentation, being mindful, of course, of what our senior planner Doug has advised about being really careful with mitigation measures. We want to be very, very clear in the motion and the second that there's going to be new language in a condition of approval, or an additional condition of approval. We will also watch to see if these kinds of adjustments might warrant the need to actually change a finding to support those conditions. So this is some practice that Chair Benjamin has really helped, as he was chair at the time. Chair at the time, Benjamin and I were discussing for some recent items, and it just highlighted a need to hone some of those practices, and we're here to support you. And we just want to be very, very clear with the integrity of the record of what you're doing when you're making decisions. And the very last part of this little segment now is...
Excuse me, Jill.
Oh, there's a question.
Commissioner Benjamin has his hand up. I wonder if it's a timely question. You're muted, Jimmy.
Sorry, you should hear me now. I just wanted to try to crystallize my understanding while we're looking at this slide by imagining when in this sequence of events a motion could occur that would not raise any concerns. I would imagine that a motion before public comment was complete could be problematic. Is your recommendation as best practices? A motion ideally would show up after deliberation initially, and then maybe when the motion shows up, it spawns additional deliberation. But a motion would never come before the public comment was called. Is that correct?
We agree with that, absolutely. And noting that sometimes the public comment period is opened and closed a couple times because the commission is accommodating to applicants or other input that's coming in later, and we understand why you do it. It does complicate the flow, but that's okay, as long as you're closing the public hearing at some point before you get to making a motion.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I could just add through the chair, I agree completely. I did just want to point out that some agencies follow a process where after public comment, but before deliberation, they'll make a motion, and then the deliberation follows the motion. My personal feeling is that makes it a more stilted and awkward conversation. I think having some deliberation first so that everyone can get their thoughts out and then formulating a motion. Otherwise, you're like amending motions and undoing things, and it's like I'm thumbing through Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And so I think the way that you have historically done it works well for this body.
Yes, I'd agree with that exactly, Winter. With the additional thought, though, that most of the parliamentary groups I've been involved with, it isn't unusual, even after a pretty clear consensus has emerged through deliberation, that an individual might want to explain how he or she is about to vote, or maybe even say that they want to offer an amendment because they agree with 99% of the resolution but have some other factor. So I would think the way we've been doing it, plus the avenue of being open to further deliberation after the motion's on the table is the right way to go.
All right, so the last two slides in this section, and then we do have a few closing slides, but I'm going to turn it over to Brittany, who is going to highlight, in addition to private development projects or public works projects, things that may come your way in the next year or so, so stay tuned.
Thank you, Jill. So yes, in addition to the discretionary permits that will be coming your way through the planning commission, staff is putting together a work plan for our more advanced planning efforts that I was speaking to earlier. So some of these will be focused on implementing the LUP policies that were recently updated with the land use plan, and those will likely be coming in batches because there will be a lot of work to do on those implementation plan updates. This is an example of what might come first, the zoning map update to reflect the land use map changes that were made, and zoning code changes to introduce new zoning districts or overlays, such as the new rural coastal land use and workforce housing overlay. We are also working on some LUP adjacent ordinance updates, and some that have already been mentioned tonight, like the short-term rental ordinance and the accessory dwelling unit ordinance to keep up with the ever-evolving state laws. And these are both really important housing topics that we're excited to bring you soon. And then we have our general plan update. So this will be kind of to finish out the Plan HMB efforts that started in 2013, I think it was, with the General Plan Advisory Committee, and kind of jump forward with the land use plan updates. And now we have our remaining general plan work to do. So some of the legwork has already been done on this. There's been several public drafts that have been reviewed, some, a ton of community engagement, but we are excited to finish out that work. The housing element I'll just mention is on a timeline, and the housing element is on an eight-year cycle, so we do have to have a certified housing element by 2023. We do have some grant funding already to help us get this done, and Jill and I have been working closely with the 21 Elements Group to get their support on those efforts. All of this advanced planning, work plan efforts will go through our standard community engagement process, public meetings, review by your forum. It will be brought forward to you as a staff recommendation for your review and approval up to city council for their final review. So we're really excited for a productive year. I believe that's it. Go ahead, Jill.
Sure, so through the chair, that's the conclusion of our third segment. We have a couple next-step slides. If there are still any questions, though, about, well, really, anything that's come up tonight, we're happy to try to fill those now.
I'm, again, assuming there's nobody in attendees waiting for a public comment opportunity.
We have an attendee, but no public comment has arisen.
Okay, any chair? Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. So thank you for the slides, Brittany. The bullet that had the three illustrations under the implementation plan, if I understood your remarks, right, those were meant to be illustrative, not exhaustive. So if I were thinking, gosh, it seems like an open space conservation district ordinance, you know, subsection, seems like it could be a low-hanging fruit. This, you aren't saying it's not there, you're just popped a couple up that we could look at, right? Am I hearing this correctly?
Exactly. There's certainly some prioritizing that we'll have to do, and consider, you know, what is going to take a significant chunk of time and effort where we don't have any zoning right now. For example, we don't have a rural coastal zoning district that will be a whole new chapter in your zoning title that we'll need to come up with, whereas the open space for conservation district exists, but will need some updating.
Yeah. I don't mean to take this into unnoticed territory, just, you know, in terms of how we get through our work plan, I'm hoping that we can identify low-hanging fruit and check them off quickly, recognizing that there are trade-offs. So I'd love the chance to be able to kibbitz in during that process. You probably can run, but you can't hide. Then, right, same paging. That's a new phrase for me, zooming into the 90s. See what I did? So, and then one last question, with respect to the conflict of interest conversations that we've had, and the bylaws, which we kind of zoomed over again, very, very briefly. As I understand it, our bylaws encourage us to vote. Basically, it says, when you're on a planning commission, your job is to take a position. When we have conflict of interest management, we are supposed to be careful to manage that conflict. So there's, my perception here is that there is a tension between those two goals. And if you haven't, if you haven't seen one, you're on the commission, then you're not paying attention. And if you have seen, if you haven't, when you begin to think that it might be there, this is the time where you reach out to Jill and you reach out to Winter. So I want to call that out and invite the chair to help protect, help protect us from our intention to avoid conflicts when we should vote, or to avoid voting when we have conflicts. Thank you.
That's a good point from Commissioner Benjamin. You know, I will admit that when I first joined the planning commission, I thought that such issues would be handled for me by somebody such as Winter. And it's been, I now get it in my thick skull that we all have to be, frontline is, we all have to be responsible for that with support from the city attorney's office and staff. Do any other commissioners have any comments on the subject of, that staff has, all the subjects that staff has presented to us? Sarah, do you have your hand up? No? Okay, I don't, I don't see any commissioners with hands up. But just say one last compliment on this, the, all the material that you folks have worked so hard to put together and share is very valuable. Among other things, it's made me appreciate how different life became for us all in last March, when we transitioned suddenly and catastrophically from meetings in the EOC to meetings on Zoom. And I applaud Bridget and everybody for making that transition. I'm certainly glad it wasn't my job to get the business of the city up and running on Zoom this way. So thank you for that.
That's great. So Chair Riddick, we just have a couple left thoughts for you, and I'm really proud of all of the staff who presented to you tonight. They worked hard to put this together. It was many hands. Of course, Winter was the, what they call the laboring or she really, really gave a great training in those areas. But we know you're going to want more, and you are bright and curious and thoughtful and incredibly challenging and gratifying to serve planning commissions. So we're looking around for training, and Scott's going to cover a few of the basic offerings, and then we're encouraging you to tell us about other ideas. But go ahead, Scott.
Thanks, Jill. As you can see on this slide, we put together a little list of training opportunities, obviously not exhaustive, but anticipate throughout the upcoming year, we will be sending the commission, you know, training, education opportunities. One in particular, League of California Cities hosts a planning commissioners academy meeting, and normally in the spring, and I have actually had a chance to attend it in the past as staff, and found it a great opportunity for planning commissioners, just to, you know, learn more about what's involved with positioning, you know, insightful ideas. And then also, we are anticipating more SEQA training from Doug Garrison, who gave a little SEQA talk earlier tonight. So anticipate that at some point throughout the year to get more in-depth SEQA education opportunity in-house here at the city. And of course, we're available for questions, or if you find a training opportunity that you think would be helpful, we're happy to, you know, facilitate that.
Commissioner Hernandez had his hand up.
On the League of California Cities Training, or the Planning Commissioners Academy, is that going to be a virtual event?
Yes, I, yes, I think at this point, I have actually pulled it up recently, but I more than likely, yes, virtual. When I attended, it was in Sacramento, at the convention center there in downtown Sacramento.
And are there limited number of seats for the planning commissioners to participate, or is there a budget for all of us to participate?
As we have had budget to send all of our planning commissioners.
I'll pop in, we do for that, and especially since you're not traveling. And this is actually great here to get training, if you are comfortable with the virtual conferences, because we do save money on travel, and we will make sure that you are notified when these come up. I think it also, that the league training always fills up, but if they're virtual, they might not have that problem.
I'd be very interested in attending.
I attended that League of Cities Academy last March. It was kind of the last thing I did before the lockdown, and it was excellent, but a lot of the excellence was from being in the rooms with 200 other planning commissioners. So it's not going to be as great virtually, but the presentations are high-quality. Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. So, yeah, I echo your thoughts about the value of being there in person, but you've got to take what you can get. Some of us are also enjoy learning through reading, and there was a wonderful couple of books put out by the Solano Press. One was called the SEQA Desk Book. I don't know if it still exists. I think I loaned mine to somebody. I don't even know where it is now.
It does exist, Jimmy. I bought a copy of it on your recommendation.
Right. And if they're, assuming that they're updating it regularly, it is a wonderful tool that presents in an extremely neutral way with as much nuance as you care to have, with plenty of case study reinforcement, and really, it's really a wonderful tool for understanding... how that works. There are a number of other kinds of training. For example, a while back, we had Anne Riley speak to the commission about the nature of restoring streams. She is a member, she was an expert for the Regional Water Quality Control Board. She may be working with the Biden administration now. I don't know. Or she may still be with, with the, the, the Regional Water Quality Board. One other question on, so those are kinds of trainings that are not this kind of formal. One other formal kind of training that it seems to me used to be required of staff and maybe planning commissioners, I don't know, was the sort of, you know, the things you have to do to fit into a social, a cohesive social fabric, like, you know, avoid sexually harassing people and not be threatening. It used to be that there was a, some kind of certification that they expected us to go through. Does that still exist? And if so, how do we do it?
So the ethics training, is that, is that what you're referring to?
Thank you.
Yes, California APA does offer ethics training.
It's different than the harassment training, but we'll, we'll, we'll get back to them, both of those. And I think they're on two-year cycles and we will, we will circle back.
Thank you. No, no further comments.
Okay, very helpful.
Commissioner Gorn?
The League of California Cities thing is late March, early April.
So you'll, commission will see a follow-up from us with when we get links and we're ready to register, we'll, we'll, we'll forward that to you. And Brittany, can you pop to the last slide, please? And so we definitely heard tonight, CQ, CQ, we need some more CQ. And we actually heard that before the session, which is why Doug spent a bit more time than the flyover of some of the other topics from staff. We would imagine a special session. I heard from a commissioner that there was interest in more context about the coastal act at some point. And so we think that would be good if it was perhaps staged when we're working on some of our implementation plan. At the same time, if we're going to do something like that, we should probably roll up our sleeves and get on a little more versed in general plan, which is also very important. So there's opportunities to work these things in as either separate sessions or to be just part and parcel of working on the project that you're going to have before you. And you also have relationships with other committees and commissions. In particular, the Architectural Advisory Committee, who is advisory to the commission. And then you have a liaison now, a new liaison with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And from time to time, the Parks and Recreation Commission's interests are overlapping a little bit with the planning commission. In the past, we've had joint study sessions. We, we will look for opportunities to conduct those, not just to do it, but to do it because it's, it's worthwhile for you. But we're really open to your thoughts on this. I'll be perfectly blunt if we don't have the, the ability to pull it off. We're, we're working pretty hard, but we can, we can do a few more of these things when we're, we're sharing the load. So we thank you for your time tonight. We put this together and with the intent that it would be hopefully helpful to the commission. You do have over 600 people who receive your emails, say, I know they weren't in the Zoom room tonight, but people do watch your meetings later. And we, we did also have a spin on this, hoping that it would be helpful to the public. And that is, is so crucial. So feedback on this, if you want to talk to me this week or next about this retreat and this experience, please let us know. We've never done anything quite like this before. And appreciate your patience and it's late, your stamina. So very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Very well done. I appreciate the hard work that must have gone into preparing that. Are we on to director's report then?
We can't, we can't wait. Let's see. So give me one moment. I will be brief because frankly, we just covered so many things tonight. And we've had a lot of administrative actions because of the activity with accessory dwelling units in particular, and brought this up before. Tomorrow is a director's hearing as well as with three administrative items. We are having a hearing on a temporary use for a recycling center, which is grant funded and located on a paved area behind a building in the Strawflower Shopping Center. There are no permanent improvements. If there were permanent improvements, or if this was going to be a long-term use, this would be coming to you because it's short-term and temporary. I'm going to take it out of hearing. It is appealable. It could still end up in your lap. If it's a successful project and comes back for a coastal development permit in the future for longer term facility, it will be a planning commission item. So I just wanted you to know what the thinking was from staff about whether or not we were going to keep that in, in a realm of a director hearing versus bringing it to the planning commission. It is exempt from CQ. But it is within the Coastal Commission's appeals jurisdiction, which I prefer to not take those items typically. But again, you, you've heard me say it before, we try to calibrate to your, your intent and your feedback is always welcome on, on how we're handling these items. The rest of these are for an accessory dwelling unit on Granelli. And another accessory dwelling unit on, this one's on the four hundred block of Poplar. And an addition with no A D U, an addition at 1502 Spinnaker. And those are being administrative. We'll have our, our little virtual conference room and encourage people to give input because they can't come and see us at City Hall right now. And I don't have any other updates on for city council items. I don't, I, we don't have anything from our department on their next agenda. But do, you know, Bob Nisbet, the city manager came to speak with you tonight and he's really wants participation at the Open House, which is the second week of February. We'll, we'll forward the invitation to that. This is the Economic Recovery Initiative and there's already been a comprehensive presentation to city council last week about this. So if you're interested in that, I'd encourage you to take a look at that video. It's, it's a really well-covered. We're planning to have a study session with you possibly at your very next meeting on the short-term rental ordinance. This is something we had done a lot of work on with the commission a couple of years ago, and then a year ago, and then we got COVID and we were working on the land use plan and we, we really want to wrap it up. We had a lot of good public input, which was summarized and thought through by the commission, where the commission provided guidance and we, we want to wrap up this draft ordinance in a study session format before we go to hearing. We think it's important to have this in place before the summer. We, we anticipate a lot of activity with this land use and we, we think we should catch up to the needs of the neighborhoods with respect to this land use. That is all we have tonight for the director's report. And return it to the chair.
Thank you, Jill. Do planning commissioners have any communications they'd like to share? Commissioner Benjamin?
I'm not sure it's a planning commissioner communication, but before we leave the director's report, I know we, we blew past the Form 700 in the earlier presentation. Didn't know if there was, I was thinking maybe it was a director thing, or maybe we don't need to talk about it tonight, which is all good.
Well, so we provided it in your packet, just as a reminder, the city clerk will, of course, make sure that you're all noticed to get that done in time. New incoming Commissioner Gorn will have to actually do his sooner than the rest of you is initiation of office. The rest of us, I believe that the deadline is April. So you have some time. And there's an automatic system that the city clerk uses to chat to you through your city email. So we'll, we have more. Commissioner Gorn has already endured a whole lot of onboarding with us and we're making binders and hopefully not overwhelming him and scaring him away. But that, that is on our list of things to do. Bridget swarmed, swarmed in and he's signed the paperwork and turned it into Tara. So there's no getting out of it now. You're, you're on board.
Commissioner Gorn does not, but it is one more indiscretion. I just wanted to make, or not indignity. I just wanted to make sure it didn't fly under the radar if it was supposed to come up. So thank you. No, no other reports. Thank you.
Any other commission communications, Dave?
Yeah, well, I know this wasn't for me, but this was a terrific introduction for me. Thank you very much. That was a really great way to start. Appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you for being aboard. I, I'll share one observation as part of my communications. I, I saw the county's drilling team out at Poplar Beach parking lot late this morning. You, you all remember the, the seismic testing drilling program to go on on the edge of the bluffs and at the, at the foot of the bluffs on Poplar Beach. So I was surprised to see them there, given how much rain is in the forecast this week, but there they were.
Through the chair, did they actually go down onto the, onto the sandy beach?
I do not. That's a good question, and I wondered that. And it sounded to me from a certain distance that they were down at the foot of the bluff, but I, I do not know that. But you know, in any case, there were, there were to be two bases for their operations, one at Kelly Beach and one on the the south side of the Poplar Beach parking lot. And it was the Poplar Beach parking lot where I saw the rig.
Yeah. Looking at that, looking at that forecast and some of the waves we've been having recently, I would certainly have thought twice, but it's their, it's their skin, not mine.
So we don't, we can talk about this briefly. Staff has heard about this and we're in contact with folks involved in that project and we've reviewed all the conditions of approval. And weather conditions are acknowledged in the conditions of approval. So just know that there's, we're working on that and we can probably give you an update at your next meeting if you're interested.
Just idle curiosity. Didn't mean to make it a discussion item. Thank you.
Yeah, indeed. Any other commission communications? Oh, Sarah, please.
Yes, there's a chair. Thank you. Yeah, I, I said two things. One is that I wanted just to, some news about actually the San Mateo RCD, the Resource Conservation District, which is where I work. Last week was approved for a new increased sphere of influence. And so the areas that the Resource Conservation District serves, you know, as a special district, non-regulatory serves public and private landowners on a wide variety of issues. But now before, it really excluded Half Moon Bay. And so now that area that sir, that, that the RCD serves has been expanded basically to include all of coastal San Mateo all the way actually to 280. And so it might be a good time to have the RCD, somebody from like our executive director come and talk about the different program areas. Because there's climate and fire, ag, forest health. You know, I work on erosion and sediment management. A lot of habitat, creek habitat restoration, wetlands habitat, all that type of stuff. So there's a lot of work that the RCD and some of it happens, we already happens within and already worked with the city on certain projects. But it'd just be an interesting time because now the area that officially that RCD can serve or, you know, is serving has now expanded to include all of, to include Half Moon Bay. So, so it's just, it might be a good opportune time to learn a little bit more about natural resources kind of services that are available. So. The other thing is that since everybody's doing book recommendations, I don't read planning books. I should, but I don't. But I would recommend a really good book called Behave. And it's about the biology of humans at their best and worst behaviors. And it is super interesting. It is a beast of a book, but it is really helpful book for, you know, just it's so helpful for, for understanding us as and how we behave. So I highly recommend that book.
What's the name of it, Sarah?
Behave. Like as in behave yourself, but not like, but it's about human behaviors at their best and worst. And it's, it's by Robert Sapolsky.
He's great. Any other communications?
Well, if you want to escape and not read any planning books, you need something to keep you entertained on your drive and not make you fall asleep. If you're coming to Half Moon Bay from, say, Menlo Park. There's a couple of books. One is the Diviner's Lightweight series fiction. And then there's the biography of Ron Chernow, which is a grant, which is a fantastic book, which you might want to get as a book on tape if you don't want to carry true beast of a book around. But they're both fantastic and a little, a little different.
Yeah, a friend of mine threw out his back with that grant biography.
He's like serious.
Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn if there are no other book recommendations.
I was going to start thinking we should agendize a book recommendation. I move we adjourn.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
We have a second from Commissioner Hernandez. Could we have a roll call, please, Bridget?
Commissioner Gorn? He's muted, but I can.
You may be muted, Dave.
It's okay. It's like Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Polgar?
Yes.
And Chair Reddick?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night and be well.
You too.
Good night.
Good night.